Good morning. I'd like to call Committee of the Whole Meeting for January 25th. Committee to order. And recognize that this meeting is being held on the traditional territory of the Leilua Nation. A motion to approve the agenda, second by Director Popple. And the first item, Jen is zooming in today and Russell is not here. So the mayor is also zooming in. And here is Jackie Rasmussen, the alternate for Area B from the Lilawat Regional Invasive Species Society. For the presentation. Good morning, Jackie.
Good morning.
I can read over to you.
Thank you. How's my volume?
Can I back up, Jackie? I forgot to do number two, which was to approve the agenda. We didn't.
Okay. Second day, we didn't vote.
We have. Is anyone opposed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda approved. Now for the regional moment, Area B.
Thanks, everyone. Good morning. I just wanted to do a volume checker. Can you hear me okay?
Very well, perfect.
Okay, okay, excellent. So thank you for inviting me to give this presentation. These slides were provided by the master's student, Virginia Ogerly, doing the the project on the McKay Creek wildfire. It's got a very big name, native invasive plant growth trajectories across different burn severities. And these are preliminary observations. There's just a quick outline. Oh, sorry, next slide, please. This is an outline of what I'm going to talk to you about today. So project partners, weeds and wildfire methodology, preliminary observations and some preliminary conclusions. Next slide, please. Definitely, we're very thankful for the community partnerships that have been established and developed throughout this project. Squaila, Huihusten, Tikipapetla, Stalium Government Services and Lilawat Tribal Council have been all involved. And here are some pictures of on the ground work that they've been doing. And we are, just wanted to let you know that this is a project by the master's student that is supervised by Dr. Jennifer Grenz, whose Indigenous Ecology Lab at UBC is basically reshaping the way research is done. Jennifer is a proud Naklatan, a member whose family's relations are found also in Lilawat and Lilawat. So Stalium and Shwepmek. And Elris helped to facilitate these Stalium partnerships because we have well-developed long-term relationships with these communities. And meetings and discussions took place prior to the beginning of all of the projects starting so that they could hear from the communities, what were their concerns and what were their priorities for the affected fire area. So the discussions helped to shape the project, the placement of the plots and the involvement on the ground. And this wasn't an option. This is, this was basically a mandatory part of the way the Indigenous Ecology Lab works. It's important to look at the land from their perspective as an interrelated system. And in this case, McKay Creek is not just a wildfire, but it's part of a food system that the Stalium have relied on and continue to do so. That includes plant life and all the four-legged relations that rely on that plant life, soil and trees. Next slide, please. So just an overview of weeds and wildfire. As many of you know, wildfire frequencies and intensity have increased in BC, especially over the last five years. This is due to decades of fire suppression. And post wildfire invasive plants readily invade ecosystems and continue to make ecosystem level transformations to the plant community composition. Invasive plants complicate restoration efforts and alter vegetation trajectories from the normal ecosystem growth patterns that would normally occur after a wildfire. Sorry about that. Next slide, please. So this is the wildfire footprint and just an overview of what it looks like. It's 46,000 hectares and the majority of the wildfire was severely burnt. And I'll describe what that means later. Impacts included habitat of endangered plant and wildlife species, impacts to traditional territory and the plants that they rely on for food, medicine and ceremony. And it comes on the heels of a big bar slide that have impacts to salmon. It also impacted livestock pastures where ranchers turn out cattle and also roads and trails were closed. Next slide, please. So just some pictures and description of what the burn severities look like. The far left is the high burn severity where it is defined as it killing off all the trees and leaving large patches of bare soil. In the middle, you can see that is a medium burn severity where there is some trees that are killed and, but the shrubs and plants community did come back. And then the low severity burn is where some trees were killed, but mostly the fire helped to rejuvenate grasses and create diversity with plants. Plants came back very strongly. Next, next slide, please. The plot locations were done with a random process and there's some example or some description there. It's called preferential stratified random sampling. Some were burned or at least moved depending on sort of some factors that were on the ground. But basically, the areas that they put them in, they were more burn severity invasive presence due to wildfire and grazing pressure. There were 78 plots in total, 24 of them are fenced, 54 were unfenced. And then each of them, there were 26 in each of the different burn severities. And you can see little circles. Those are the plot locations. Next slide, please. This is the photographs of what the fenced plots look like. And they were installed as a response to the concerns that were, they were hearing from the Stalium about grazing after wildfire. And so this is an important, this is important information that the Stalium wanted after we, after they talked. So these will be monitored and they have deer fencing over top of them as well as around. Next slide, please. Here are some of the things that were, the methodology that was for the sampling that included vegetation information as well as something called soil hydrophobicity testing. There were three meter squared plots and the species cover in the one-by-one quadrants within the three-meter plots were collected and using an iPad and there were three repetitions per plot. The other piece of that was the infiltration rate of water using a mini disc infiltrometer. This is a small little, you can see that in the picture in the lower right-hand side. And it was used to see if water was infiltrating the soil, whether it was, or it was repelling water. So this is important for, you know, erosion and things like that post wildfire. Next slide, please. It's very significant to describe the bare ground. And these are some photographs of what you can see that even two years post wildfire, there are large patches of bare ground remaining. And they're very vulnerable to invasive species colonization and soil movement and erosion. So this is just, I'll give you some more information about that. But you can see the pictures and what's, what it looked like on the ground last year. Next slide, please. Here are some, oh, right, I switched around it. So this is a summary. It's a bar graph. You can see the three different colors. There's exotic, native and bare ground. And basically, the significance of this is that you can see the dark green. It represents exotic plants. And basically, the average percent cover of those invasives is virtually the same across all burn severities, regardless of where the plot was placed. Just so you know that in the methodology, the plots were placed set back from roads because roads are a known vector and usually where invasives are. And so you can, it was important for the research to be collected in this way because, because you didn't want to skew it that, you know, roads are going to show invasives anyways. And the other significant piece about this slide is the brown. And the brown color in the bar graph represents bare graph and shows that the majority of the plots still had 50% ground, like bare ground, which is a potential for more colonization of invasive plants. Next slide, please. Here are some examples of the erosion that has occurred in the area. So just so you know that this is, it's important to note that the area already before it was hit by the fire definitely had some chiramifological features that were creating that erosion process. And with roads and logging, there were some erosion and mass wasting things that were occurring already. But as a result of the fire and in the second year after the fire, last year, we had heavy spring rains that washed out many of the major creek crossings on the West Pavilion Road and side drainages. Rapid repairs had to be made to the road, which was necessary with large machinery. Huge like culverts that were four and five, maybe even six times the size of what were already current on the road had to be placed. And there was a lot of soil movement. We witnessed 10 to 15 feet gorges, basically where the road was supposed to be. And machine work exposes the soil and it means the more risk of introduction and spread of invasive plants. Next slide, please. So these are some of the examples of roadside weeds that were already, that are present in the West Pavilion. A is bull thistle, M is mullen, C is white clover, D is Canada thistle, and E is a patch of burdock. And then F is just an example of bull thistle and Canada thistle. And just to note that nap weed is also widespread along road sides. Next slide, please. There are range distances in the May Creek wildfire, McKay Creek wildfire area. Ministry of Forest manages these grazing on the public land. And the Stalium were very concerned about the impacts of grazing while during fieldwork. Virginia witnessed and noted some of the impacts that grazing is having to the area. Picture A shows soil compaction and erosion and that the moss layer that would normally hold soil together is damaged by some footprints. B shows signs of overgrazing of the bunch grass. C is an example of multiple years of overgrazing where species becomes weak in the roots and then they become over time removed because they're consistently chosen and grazed and more bare ground. D is an introduction and spread of invasive species, the cattle are standing in. And E just is a picture of cattle and pastures where they were supposed to be resting for post-fire and they're still there. It's very hard in an open area where many of the fence lines and natural boundaries were actually burned. Next slide, please. This is an example of some of the monocultures. This is, this is called prickly lettuce, which is more of a nuisance species, but it was found in large monocultures, colonizing the disturbed areas after fire. Next slide, please. So as some preliminary conclusions, they include first and second year post wildfire are critical periods for weed management. Unmanaged monocultures can become a source for seed dispersal for subsequent years. And unmanaged roadside weeds will begin to creep into recovering forests through cattle and land movement like erosion. So wildfire and human management activities create opportunities for weeds to invade. These are pictures of Virginia and Dr. Jennifer Grenz out on the land. And next slide. And this is the photo of a field tour in September where the CBC show Ideas was interviewing Virginia and Dr. Grenz and partners for the project and for an episode that will feature the project and it's upcoming to the CBC Radio and a podcast soon. And this is an especially important slide to acknowledge the funders, including the Squamish Lilawat Regional District as well as My Tax and Circ and UBC. And I want to just acknowledge that without the funding from the SLRD, this project wouldn't have begun. So we're grateful, especially because Virginia will be finishing her masters this year, but building it into a PhD. So she'll be collecting fieldwork and continuing the plots with her partners this year. And because there's so much information and potential to learn more with the data that she's identified, that she'll be transitioning. And also to the money that was earmarked from the SLRD allowed the My Tax grant to, basically, we had 30,000 set aside and 15 of that was specifically earmarked for My Tax and it grew it to $65,000. And that's all. If you have any questions, I can take them.
Thank you very much, Jackie. It's really important work and I'm proud of what you're doing. And I welcome your questions from the directors. Yes.
Maybe more of a comment, but the statistic, the 50%, oh, sorry, yes, you're.
We're learning to speak.
Sorry, Jack, yeah, the, your image is over here, which is why I must be, but the statistic around the 50% just bare land and the risk that poses is really both from invasive species perspective and the erosion is truly remarkable. I think we, goes a long way to highlight the challenges that we collectively have in front of us as we deal with this and recovery and other areas as well. So yeah, thank you for the presentation. Really, really eye-opening.
You're welcome. And we're hoping that this will give some insight and some relevant information to the Downton and Casper fires.
Well, I see that Director of the Mayor has his agenda. Go ahead, Sal.
Thank you, Jackie, for the great presentation and I'm sure that everyone is going to gain from from that project. I've got a couple of questions. One is regarding salvage logging. How much salvage logging has taken place or is planned for the McCreek Creek fire? And are there any plots, if there has been? Are there any of these plots in any salvage logging areas?
To my knowledge, we've had no salvage logging at all, only endangered tree removal in the McKay Creek area. But there was plans for salvage logging and so all of those layers and areas that were planned were given to Virginia prior to her plot placement so that she didn't have the plots directly necessarily in the salvage logging. It was mostly to do with safety and, you know, areas that, so that she wasn't, you know, in the way and if things were happening. It was going to, it was supposed to happen at the same time. And so the salvage logging would have created a whole nother level of variable. And because salvage logging creates so much more disturbance and introduction of machinery that we've seen over time is a direct vector for invasive species. And this is, so we're kind of, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a double-edged sword in that, you know, we didn't have that, but at the same time, they weren't able to economically take advantage of the logs before. My understanding, they're not, no longer economically viable to take out.
Yeah, that's correct. There's, there's a time limit on burnt trees for harvesting. As you know, we, there will be salvage logging happening here in Downton Lake wildfire. But on a positive note, you're aware of our White Park Pine project that we're, the community is trying to move forward on. Francis Ardell of Fish and Wildlife for our area. He is going to be initiating the first meeting on that. Just wanted to let you know that.
Excellent. That's great to know. I would really like to be able to put some, even some plots for, from Elris' perspective in some of those areas, pre and post harvest even to do some monitoring. So I'm, I'm trying to move forward on that as well.
Yep. We've got some new KMSL files if you want. I can send them to you.
Perfect. That would be awesome.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Sal. Thank you, Jackie. Are there other comments or questions? Directors donors move your seat. Thank you. Second by Director Renford. All in favor? Carrie. I'll see you in Lilawat.
Thank you. Goodbye. Thanks.
Jackie made a small amount of Area B money go a long, long way. Yeah.
Sure. I thought that was a great use of the regional moment. Like typically, we have ourselves present and we've been doing that for a long time. And I appreciate it. I may learn from that and bring that as a teammate in the future. Well done.
Thank you. Next thing on our agenda now, we don't have a clue, so. So our next delegation and apologies that we're running a little bit late. John Curry. Vice President of Responsible Development and Stewardship, BC Energy Regulator, Environmental Management under BCER's Regulatory Mandate. Welcome, Mr. Curry. I'm going to your staff. Ready, ready?
Good morning. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
And can you see me?
Yes, we can.
Yep. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Can I get the first slide? Thank you. A few months ago, the BC Energy Regulator offered to provide an overview of our application review and oversight process. And we are invited to speak today and I would like to thank you for that opportunity. I'd like to recognize the Chair and the Directors. And before we begin, however, I haven't met anybody here and I'd just like to introduce myself. As was mentioned, my name is Sean Curry. I graduated in 1985 with a Bachelor of Science in Forestry from UBC. So I spent 28 years in forestry in a wide variety of roles, starting in governments, industry, ending in consulting. And that was primarily in Western Canada. I moved to Victoria and the BC Energy Regulator in 2011 and I've been here for about 11 years. I've had a variety of roles and as was mentioned, my current role is Vice President of Responsible Development and Stewardship. And what that role entails is essentially overseeing a department of 80 technical and professional staff working on indigenous consultation, application submission and review, determination permitting, as well as environmental oversight from a regulatory perspective throughout the lifecycle of energy resource activities. My partner and I live in Victoria and we have a large and growing blended family. Got three grandkids and more on the way, which is pretty exciting. In addition to three grandkids, six bikes, two kayaks, two dogs, and really enjoying the West Coast lifestyle. Next slide, please. So before we start, I'd like to acknowledge and pay our respects as an organization to the many indigenous treaties and treaty areas, each with unique cultures, languages, legal traditions and relationships to the land and water, which are work spans. We also respectfully acknowledge the Métis and Inuit people that live across British Columbia. I would like to acknowledge and respect the Coast Salage, Lekongan speaking peoples on whose traditional territories I live and work. And the Sangis, Isqamult and Waseanich peoples, whose historical relationships with the land continue to this day. Next slide, please. So the agenda, the presentation, what I plan to do is provide an overview of our application review process relative to major projects and we'll focus on three themes. First one will be just an overview of us as a regulator. The second, we'll be looking at the framework for major projects. The third is diving into a little bit of detail on our statutory decision-making process. And the fourth one will just be looking at some additional information that, for the committee. Next slide, please. Next slide. So who are we and what do we do? And there's two points I want to kind of emphasize here. The BC Energy Regulator is a crown agency with a board of directors overseeing our implementation of the Energy Resources Activities Act. One board member is the Deputy Minister of the Energy, Mines and Low Carbon Innovation Ministry. And our mandate is quite broad and includes oil and gas, carbon capture and storage, hydrogen, methanol, ammonia, as well as geothermal. The key points on this slide, really that kind of govern what we do and who we are is that we have this, our first point is the Energy Resources Activities Act. And that act identifies our purpose, authority, outlines our objectives, processes, technical specifications, essentially the breadth and scope of our mandate and operations from a legal requirement. The mandate letter is something that comes to all ministry agencies and as a crown corporation, we get one as well. And our July 2023 letter has a couple of points that I think are probably relevant to the conversation this morning. The first point is that in that letter, the mandate letter from the minister, we're to continue to transform our indigenous engagement and consultation processes to address First Nations ability to meaningfully exercise our treaty rights. Second point is to build effective regulatory frameworks that enable British Colombians to transition into low carbon emission sources of energy that are responsive to a changing environment and continue engagement with those affected by energy resource development. And the third piece that's in the mandate letter is that we continue to improve our compliance and enforcement activities to ensure that companies and operators meet their regulatory obligations. That's working in collaboration with the Environmental Assessment Office and other agencies. The last piece on government policy is, we'll come back in the presentation. And we have a special legislative tool called a specified enactment. And what that does is that we are given as an organization, the authority to undertake the reviews and make statutory decisions for small pieces of other acts that are needed to implement energy projects. So that authority and policy has been transferred to us through the specified enactment. And that is a central component of the single window approach to regulating energy resources. I get next slide? Thank you. This is just a kind of a summary of our vision, mission, values, that driver organization. And I think in the essence of time, because we did get started a bit late, what I just want to talk about here is that we have 25 years of dedicated service as an organization, close to 300 employees throughout the province and seven, seven locations scattered quite wide. Next slide, please. Our team, as you can see here, there's a variety of specialists listed. We have experts in all of the disciplines on the, on the screen. Air, water, land, subsurface resources. We also, it's not just a team of subject matter experts. We have community relations specialists that work with regional districts, cities, municipalities, landowners and a fairly robust compliance group that ensures that activities meet the permit conditions and provincial legislation. Next slide, please. Okay, we'll talk now about a bit of the framework. Next slide. So this is a real snapshot of our regulatory framework. As you could imagine, we could probably get into a four-hour discussion of what we do. But, but this really kind of summarizes it in a pretty unique slide. There's three things that are, want to draw your attention to here. The first one is the Energy Resources Activities Act. And I mentioned a single window. And so through that particular act, through the specified enactments that create the single window agency. So that act governs what we do. There are powers under that act for our Board of Directors to sign off on technical regulations. And we have a suite of those technical regulations governing technical activities as well as the LGIC has the ability to make regulations that govern us and there's at least 10 there. So there's a fair, fairly broad backstop of legislation. I mentioned the second part, the ability to make regulations. The third part is the specified enactments. And you can see the list here at the bottom of the slide. I won't get into a lot of detail, but it covers the Land Act, Water Sustainability Act, Heritage Conservation Act, the Environmental Management Act, which I'll talk a little bit about in more detail, and other acts such as the Forest Act, the Mining Act, that sort of thing. Under the Environmental Management Act, I want to draw your attention to that. And there are a couple of pieces under there. We're looking at approvals and permits that we have the authority to. We're looking at approvals and permits that we have the authority to, to issue for waste discharge authorizations and that waste discharge authorization can either be in the air or in the water. Next slide, please. This is a schematic of the relationship that we have with the Environmental Assessment Office. And I want to draw your attention to the, kind of at the very top, the seven stages of environmental assessment. So there's the planning, applications, construction, reporting, commissioning, decommissioning and restoration. And so when we talk about a life cycle, that's a major project's life cycle. That's the life cycle of the project. And I think, as you can imagine, it varies in length. The, once the Assessment Office issues a certificate, there are certain components that their certificate covers and it's shown by that, that particular arrow. And it covers off some of the construction reporting, commissioning, decommissioning and restoration activities. Our role when we work with major projects is to ensure that we minimize any regulatory overlap between our jurisdiction and the Environmental Assessment Office as well as working with the Environmental Assessment Office to ensure that there's no gaps in, in, in regulatory oversight. So our role here, as you can see, it's a bit more detailed. Once an environmental assessment certificate has been issued, we have responsibility for looking at what are called primary permits. And that may be for a facility or a pipeline, that sort of thing, as well as supporting permits. And a lot of these permits come through specified enactments as well as permit amendments. The one unique thing that we do have the ability to do is, as you see on the far left of our, our component, is the investigative use. And that allows us to issue permits so that a proponents can go out and do the needed geotechnical work or water work or wildlife surveys or whatever the case may be prior to submitting their application to the Environmental Assessment Office. So I think that's all I wanted to cover there. Can we go to the next slide? So turn to statutory decision making. Next slide, please. So these, these nine bullets really summarize the, the key steps of the B C Energy Regulator's application review, consultation, permitting process. There's a pre-application planning and what that involves is that a proponent will access all the data that we have, all the data that they have. They will reach out to indigenous communities to work with them. And essentially this particular component is to try and cite the activity, factoring in all of the available data and interests of all parties. Consultation and notification is with regional districts. It's with cities, landowners, licensed users of the land base. There's a fairly hefty First Nations engagement component. Application submission is where the applicant submits the information to us after going through all those first three bullets. We, I mentioned our subject matter experts. Our subject matter experts review the applications from a technical perspective, whether that's engineering, air emissions, moose habitats, below groundwater, air emissions. We bundle up all the results of that information and provide that to First Nations through our consultation process. That information comes back in and we factor all of that information into making a decision that the application can proceed or it cannot proceed. Part of our process during the consultation and information gathering is that we will attach binding permit conditions to an application, given the information discussion and processes that have occurred prior to making a decision. We will notify the decision and then we go into some post permitting oversight related to compliance activities and monitoring to ensure that what we have dictated to the company is occurring and that they're following the required legislation. Next slide, please. So under the Environmental Management Act Waste Discharge Authorizations, there's a bit of a twist. There's, there's more steps. And I'll just speak to the, the pieces here that are, that are different than the, from a process perspective than what we do outside of an M O Waste Discharge Authorization. So the first one is a pre-application meeting. We don't require that with our applications, but it's, it's required under M O Waste Discharge Authorizations. There's another component around sharing information requirements. We do it slightly differently, but that's ensuring that all, all parties know what information is required. There's an assessment around best available technology. We don't require that in our day-to-day sort of applications, but it's required under Emma. And then there's a discussion or review of draft permit conditions. So in addition to everything I mentioned, there are these other requirements that, that we follow. And just to kind of emphasize, I think what I, what I have said is that as an organization, we have the authority to make decisions under the Environmental Act. And that's from the specified enactment piece for waste discharges from energy resource activities. Next slide. So this one, I apologize in advance. It's quite, there's, there's a lot of information on here, but I thought it was quite relevant to put something like this up for the conversation this morning. So the public notification requirements, and that's, that's what this slide is speaking to, come from M O Waste, the M O or Environmental Management Act, Waste Discharge Authorization, Public Notification Regulation. This Schedule A, it illustrates the requirements on who to notify. I want to draw your attention to item one, where it says permit. And if you read across, it has this code in column three, M, R, N, A and D. And if you look below, it kind of says, you know, what M means and R means and A, et cetera, et cetera. And so just draw your attention to the M piece and that's to give notice to municipalities and regional districts. Section seven of the Public Notification Regulation identifies that comments are to be provided within thirty days of the last posting. And the decision maker has the authority, however, to continue to consider comments received up until that date of decision. So regarding Fortis's permit application and the recent environmental protection notice that was posted, the decision maker has advised that they will be continuing considering comments up until the date of the decision. In this process that we're in, the applicant, so in this case Fortis, collects comments received during the public notification period and provides responses to those comments that are within the applicant's ability to address. And a summary of those comments and responses are submitted to us as an organization. As with all applications that we receive, we will consider materials received that are relevant to the decision before them. For Fortis's application, the original public comment period began October twenty-ninth of twenty-twenty to October twenty-eighth of, or October twenty-ninth of twenty-twenty to November twenty-eighth of twenty-twenty. And the package went to a very broad group from the Squamish Chief, B C Gazette, Department of Fisheries, Squamish, District of Squamish, Vancouver Coastal Health, and two public information sessions were held virtually. Based on our decision maker's review of the file, an oversight was noticed. And I think you're, you're probably aware of this particular one. That, that oversight was that the Squamish Lilawet Regional District was not included in the original notification that went out. And we apologize for that. It was a combination of Fortis not providing a complete list to us. And we would review that list and say, that looks good. Fortis had omitted Squamish Lilawet Regional District. We did not notice that. So it was a combination of, of errors that provided and created this situation. As a result, the B C decision maker determined that additional public notification was appropriate to support a decision on the permit application by Fortis. And that is that timeline that, in terms of when Fortis announced through the holidays, was selected by Fortis. But as I mentioned, the decision has not been made by our decision maker and they are open to receiving additional comments. One kind of concluding point before I open it up for questions. The Eagle Mountain Discharge Application, like other waste discharge authorization, relies on qualified professionals and includes a review of the materials submitted to refine and outline potential contaminants of concern within the discharge and anticipated volume of the discharge, what options there are, proposed treatment, sampling and monitoring, the receiving environmental characteristics, including fish and fish habitat assessment. Next slide. And then the last piece on additional information. This is just a kind of a bundling up of a variety of information sources that the committee or the community may be interested in. We have our links under the B C Regulator to who we are, as well as our major projects website. There's a variety of links to the Environmental Assessment Office in terms of the act, as well as links to wood fiber and the Eagle Mountain Pipeline. And then links to the Ministry of Environment Climate Change Strategy around waste discharge authorizations. And if there's interest, what water licenses are and approvals. So thank you for your time and I believe you've got some time for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. I have Director Stoner and Director Herford. Questions, comments, please. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, good chair, and thanks for being here today, Mr. Curry, and for the overview of the work that B C R did. Obviously, we have been challenged and appreciate that you recognize that there's been gaps in the past in terms of identifying especially the S R D and hope that that doesn't happen again going forward. My question is around the role of B C E R in terms of assessing cumulative impacts of multiple applications within the same geographic region. So on your website, you do speak about cumulative impacts, but only under the area-based analysis framework, which applies solely to the piece region. And so I'm curious about the role or any authority that B C E R has for assessing cumulative impacts of multiple projects.
Thank you for the question and it was Director Stoner?
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, it's, it's, it's a good question. We, given the role, the, the kind of the dual role that we have with the Ministry of Environment, the, the initial cumulative effects assessments are done through the Environmental Assessment Certificate process. And the conditions that have been identified in the Environmental Assessment Certificate are designed to address the, the broader cumulative effects impacts from that perspective. And, and that's done because the, the Environmental Assessment Certificate is essentially a go or a no-go decision. And part of that go or no-go decision is, is considering cumulative effects. So once that decision is made and the broad conditions are put out in the Environmental Assessment Certificate, it comes to us to look at within the environmental footprint or the, the footprint of the certificate, the, I mentioned specified enactments and the various implications of those. And so our, our scope is, is, in this particular instance, is limited to working within what the Environmental Assessment Office has created. In Northeast B C, where we don't have an overarching environmental assessment process, we undertake that particular role and are actually working with First Nations in Northeast B C right now to fundamentally change how we do cumulative impact assessments. And that's primarily because there isn't that overarching framework that the Environmental Assessment Office provides in this situation.
That's helpful context. Thank you. And then my second question was just in reference, you brought up the Minister's mandate letter to B C E R. And one of the points there is to improve the compliance and enforcement activities that B C E R does. I'm just curious what progress has been made since the mandate letter had come out from B C E R on those two components. There's a lot of hesitation within our communities in terms of the efficacy of B C E R's ability to to manage compliance and enforcement. So I'm just wondering if you can provide a little bit of context as to what the organization has done to try and improve that over the last few years.
Okay, thank you. The, me, I'll just provide a bit of context in terms of what we do. And so we look at a kind of a graduated non-compliance response model as, as our framework, ranging from non-compliance notices to more formal statutory enforcement actions. So it's a graduated approach. That's ensuring that our response actions are commensurate with the potential non-compliance and that we allocate our resources to maximum effect. And we will escalate to formal enforcement actions where non-compliance notices are not effective or as a circumstance is warranted. So, so if we notice something that's as far beyond what we may consider as a conversation, we will get right to action. I think we are at this particular point recognizing the, the unique role and placement of, of, of the facilities and the pipeline in the area. We are working with Squamish First Nation on a unique compliance agreement of, it's a shared process. So we are underway negotiating that to enhance our abilities to have representatives in the area and on the ground. And we have recently hired somebody on my team who is based out of Vancouver, who is a water fisheries biologist, who will be making regular visits up to the site. So that's kind of what we're doing specifically on this site.
Thank you. I think that got at the bulk of my first question, which is around that category of post permitting oversight, I think is how you, how it was, was stated. And I think, so there will be boots on the, is it normal practice that there are boots on the ground or some, or some sort of investigative monitoring measures or, or approvals given by the B C E R? Or is this something that is specific, is going to happen on, in this case, but is specific to this case? I'm just trying to understand what business is norm, as usual is and what, if any extraordinary measures are taken or just what that looks like.
Sure. And sorry, I missed your, your name. Sorry?
Right, Director Herford.
Director Herford. Thank you. So our, as you can imagine, with the bulk of our work in Northeast, Northeast British Columbia, we have a fairly large complement of staff that are out every single day looking at, at activities in Northeast B C. With the activities with Transmount Pipeline, the C G L Pipeline, as well as the L N G Canada Facility in Kitimat, we, we have compliance and enforcement staff that are assigned to those activities and they make regular field trips to do inspections on those particular areas. So with this particular focus on wood fiber and the Eagle Mountain Pipeline, one of our inspectors from, from the north has been assigned to this particular area and has been down making field visits already. And by virtue of my staff member being located in Vancouver, we are teaming up and, and sending both of them at the same time up to the wood fiber and Eagle Mountain sites.
Okay, thank you. The other piece is, I, I appreciate that the openness for comments to be received following the official thirty-day comment period. I think that thirty-day period has been challenging for local governments as well as the public, given that the, these plans are developed over a much longer period of time. So then assessing the technical details can be quite challenging. Has there been any consideration to the appropriateness of that thirty-day, that thirty-day period to, for both the public and local government to provide comment? Is this an area of change we're going to see, or is this an area of advocacy that we need to, to push on if we would like to see change?
That's a, that's a really good question and it kind of gets to a bit of a, as an organization, as a regulator, we, we face that sort of question quite a bit about, about, you know, we are constructed to implement the regulations. constructed to implement the regulations as they are written. And so in this particular case, it's, the 30 days is ported over from the Environmental Management Act and the notification regulation. So it's a, and at times, we, you know, we'd like to be able to do things differently, but it's what we are directed to do through regulation. What we have the ability to do is to continue to take comments and feedback up until the decision is made. So the decision has not been made, and the, when I talked to the decision maker yesterday, we don't have a date. So the 30 days may have come and gone, but we have the flexibility to continue to receive comments up until the decision date. So your question about advocacy and that sort of piece would be more directed towards the Ministry of Environment Climate Change Strategy, specifically around that 30 days in the regulation.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Director Peddigo, please.
Yeah, thanks. A couple of things. We did pass a resolution to provide some feedback yesterday, so I'll just flag it, maybe expect something from our chair. Also, I just wanted to highlight that in Squamish in 2020, in the lead-up to this engagement, Fortis came and did a presentation about their project and where it was at to council. And they talked about an engagement upcoming, but it was just explained as a public engagement. They were explicitly asked about what permits, including explicitly effluent and so on, they needed. And they said they didn't know, they'd have to get back to us. So this is what council heard, this is what the public heard going into this public engagement. So I think it wasn't just an issue with the S L R D. And so I just wanted to flag, there has been missteps, and I'm hearing from constituents that they're having, they had a lot of trouble getting information from Fortis for this last round of feedback to provide, you know, analyze the info and provide that feedback. So I think there may be some gaps there that we can find better ways to address. I did want to ask about the temporary permit piece, and I guess understand better how or what needs to be addressed there, because it seems that there's an affluent permit, which there's significant concerns about, there was process challenges. So they went and they got a temporary permit, which effectively lasts the whole timeframe of the full permit, which effectively then just bypasses the permit process, which seems like a significant loophole. So what, what do we need to change to make sure that sort of thing doesn't happen, that folks go through the process, that they, they sort of can't avoid the process by doing a poor job of engagement?
Thank you. And sorry, I missed your name?
Director Peddigo, Chris Peddigo.
Peddigo? Thank you, Director. So a couple of things. On that, the the approval, so the information is still coming in, and the approval was put in place because our decision maker feels confident that, given the information provided by Fortis and given the environmental effluent standards, the objectives that are set by the Ministry of Environment, feels confident that they can be met. There is a permit condition in there that discharge is not allowed to occur if those particular values are exceeded. So there's a fail-safe built-in. The, another point to raise is that a permit's going to be needed in the long term for Eagle Mountain to operate. So that decision will be a statutory decision, and that decision will include all of the information that's being collected right now. So just because there's an approval in the short term doesn't necessarily mean that there's going to be a permit in the long term, given the information that will be provided and what our decision maker and team need to go through with the information received.
Okay, I'll maybe, yeah.
Can you just acknowledge, though, how much that undermines the public engagement process? When you basically just said that you've provided a permit for something, that your decision maker has taken the decision that it's okay, based on the information that Fortis has provided to you? And then you go out and say, oh, but we'll still receive some information from the public? Like, why would the public even engage?
The approval is temporary in nature. And so the, one approval was for 15 months and one approval was for three months. And so there's a pending decision that is coming on the three-month approval about extension or not, or will it be a permit or not? So there's another decision-making process that our decision maker needs to go through, considering all the information that comes in.
Thank you. Yes, Director Crofton had a question, but first of all, Director Peddigo to finish, yeah?
Yeah, and I would still appreciate understanding what, where we would lobby the government in terms of changing some of the rules around temporary permits. But I did want to come back to my colleague's question about, around the cumulative impacts, because that wasn't considered in the E A process. And the E A process, even aside from cumulative, didn't get into the detail of effluent impacts and so on. And so, you know, affluents during construction weren't really considered during the E A process. So does that not mean that they do actually need to be considered as part of the B C E R processes and therefore the cumulative impacts as part of the B C E R processes?
The, I can't speak, and I apologize, I can't speak to what the decision maker considered and looked at in terms of making the decision. The decision that the environmental standards that are identified for emissions are a point source. And so that's, that's been the focus of the, I know it's been the focus of the application and the review. I can't speak to what the permits, the decision maker considered from a cumulative effects perspective. I just, I just don't know. I apologize for that, so. I can't speak to that at this point. I would, your question around lobbying government on changes to the approval and the permitting piece, I think that's before the Environmental Appeal Board. I think everyone is aware of that particular process, so we'll see where that goes. And then it would again be the Ministry of Environment Climate Change Strategy who would be overseeing this particular component of that regulation that talks, that one I flashed up on the screen that had the approvals and the section, Environmental Management. Let me just get that. The Waste Discharge Authorizations Public Notification Regulation Schedule A. So Ministry of Environment Climate Change Strategy oversees content of that particular regulation, so it would be with them to lobby for changes there. And I do, Chair, I do have, I am tight for time. So if there's, I don't know if there's any more questions, I might have time for one more.
We do have one more question, and I apologize, we started late, and I appreciate the extra time you're taking. This is quite an important topic. Director Crofton.
Hi, my name's Jack Crofton. I've got a couple of questions, but I'll try and ask. One, is the input received within the 30-day legislative comment period treated the same as the input received outside the 30-day legislative comment period?
Yes.
Does that move counter to legislation?
We have the, so we have the, when we make the decision around reviewing the public, the comments that have come in, and when we're making the decision, we will continue to receive and look at information. It doesn't preclude it, and that's the way we're looking at it, Director Compton, is that there is a 30-day period. And because we haven't made the decision yet, we can still consider information coming in. So there's no difference in waiting or factoring or importance when it's received. So the information that I believe will be coming from S L R D will be considered the same weight with everything else that's come in.
I ask you one more?
Sure.
Does B C E R have concerns about the ability for local governments to respond to multiple overlapping E As?
As a, hmm, I would say it's a very, it's an onerous requirement for anybody in an E A. So the concerns that we would have, I think unfortunately, have been exacerbated by our omission and the oversight of having S L R D involved in the first go-round, and that's, I again apologize for that. And that's created an extra burden. I do think that participation in an environmental assessment process is quite onerous. And the ability for a regional district to do that is probably quite a huge time commitment. So the more there are, yeah, I think it's, it's an onerous commitment.
Be good for, there be some conversation with your colleagues about coordinating for, on not dropping these all on municipalities and regional districts at the same time with this 30-day legislative period that makes it very difficult for anyone to provide useful feedback to the process. Otherwise, I think the processes are far, far less I don't know, trustworthy, because the ability for us to provide useful feedback is massively reduced and.
Point taken, Director Compton, and I will relay that back to our major projects team, and I'm sure they're aware of it, but I'll reinforce the burden that it puts on meaningful public participation and comment on the regional districts, so.
Thank you, Mr. Curry.
Thank you.
Today.
Thank you. Pardon?
We'll end there for today.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Bye-bye.
And a big five-minute recess, please. Be back at 10:10. An update from Heather Paul, the C A O. Please go ahead.
Thank you, everyone. At this time, I have nothing to update.
And now, I see we have senior planners, Kim Needham and Claire, you are here. Welcome. We're talking about climate action, part one. And I'll turn it over to you to welcome us down.
Excellent. Thank you. So through the chair, I thought I would give a brief presentation, overview of the staff report, and then we can open it up to discussion, questions, and hopefully some direction. So I would like to start by acknowledging that this report attempts to collate the work of many staff, as well as the direction of multiple boards, and also recognizing that the climate action is a dynamic and evolving space. So this is, this is an attempt to bring a lot of where we're at into one report. And on that, the purpose of the report is to, one, share the background and the current context on S L R D climate action, to provide the board with an opportunity to discuss S L R D climate action and to seek direction regarding climate action in relation to upcoming processes and future work, which can inform next steps and budget and work plans. So the S L R D board has made climate action an area of priority as per the inclusion in the S L R D board strategic plan, and important climate actions are being implemented across the S L R D as part of current work. And there's also an opportunity to consider climate action as part of upcoming processes and future work. And staff, you know, this is what we're calling climate action part one, current context and opportunities. We're suggesting a two-part process for this board level of climate action discussions and direction. We have this part one, where we're kind of looking at, you know, what we're already doing, what processes are coming up, and then really seeking specific direction on S L R D climate action framework, proposed integration to the S L R D regional growth strategy, the upcoming R G S review consideration, as well as L G cap funding, and then looking at general direction to inform next steps. And then we're proposing to come back, that we could come back with like a part two, looking at priorities and implementation and budget work plans and whatnot. So looking at this, this staff report, I'm not, I'm not going to go into each of the previous board resolutions related to climate action, but I do think it was helpful to have all these resolutions outlined in one report, sort of providing the background to today's discussion and direction requests. Over here. As part of this background, I also just wanted to highlight the new resiliency climate action coordinator that was approved by the board, and that position was in place for a few months, but it's no longer filled, and that many of these climate action tasks have now been reassigned to the S L R D Planning and Development Services Department, which is why we're here today. And also just wanted to touch on the S L R D regional growth strategy, acknowledging that its initiative of the S L R D excluding Electoral Area A, which is not part of the R G S. But it also includes districts, the Orange, the Resort Municipalities, Westler, the Village of Pemberton, and the District of Lilwet. And that the regional growth strategy provides a broad policy framework describing the common direction that regional district and number of municipalities will follow, promoting development and services that are sustainable, recognizing a long-term responsibility for the quality of life and future generations. It's based on a 20-year planning approach to guide development and encourage collaborative approaches to a sustainable future. So looking ahead here, the staff report highlights the current climate action, what the S L R D is already doing. Just wanted to acknowledge the important climate action work that's being implemented across the S L R D right now, from growth management to solid waste management, risk and resilience, agriculture and food systems, development and land use planning, trails and transportation. So there's a lot going on. And I want to focus this presentation component, though, on the future climate action opportunities. And really, like, we're kind of looking at the regional growth strategy review as an opportunity. This report is sort of putting forward a proposed approach that rather than preparing an additional standalone climate action strategy or plan, that there's an opportunity to integrate this work into the S L R D regional growth strategy. And that, given that we are considering the R G S review in 2024, this does provide a strategic opportunity just to look at integrating a broader climate lens, including mitigation and adaptation, and to really, you know, look at how we can start focusing on prioritizing actions for implementation and maybe an embedded implementation strategy. And that, you know, should the board support this approach to integrate this work into the R G S, rather than a new standalone document, we could really sort of shift into this priorities, targets, indicators, monitoring, implementation to action. And I guess the other piece there, too, is acknowledging that that this proposed approach acknowledges that many of the climate action tasks and work generally have shifted to the planning department without really an addition of new staff, and so that we're recommending integrating this work into our current processes and work plans and work that we're already ongoing and doing. The other piece that I wanted to, sort of shifting gears, another opportunity that's coming up is the L G cap funding. The S L R D will have 165,882 in reserve in 2024, and this funding must be used by March 2025. So we see there's an opportunity to use this funding to invest in E V charging, trail upgrades, or potentially broader, you know, transit-type pilot projects. We were trying to look to see, to tie this funding into existing sort of board resolutions that have yet to be actioned, because we have a bit of a tight timeline to start implementing and using that funding. And then I also just wanted, this report speaks to the modernized emergency management legislation opportunity. And really, it was intended, included in this report to flag this new legislation and the potential synergies and implications to climate action, as there will be requirements for local governments. So I can read out what the, you know, some of the recommended. So I can read out what the, you know, some of the recommended resolutions, and I can also just open it up to the floor to see if there's any questions and then discussion and kind of see where we go from here. So maybe I'll just wrap up for now and happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I see Director de Mayor, stand up, and Director Rainbow. Go ahead, Sal.
Thank you for the presentation, Mr. I, going back when former C A O Dalton was there, I did communicate with, with him that, that I was interested in the L G C A P funding. And it was related to some nonprofit organizations in the valley and two S L R D buildings. The church, which the S L R D owns, has an oil furnace. And the community complex that the S L R D owns, the basement is heated with a, by propane. If you've ever been there, you'll see a big propane tank outside. And our community, a lot of our community buildings are heated with either electric furnace or electric baseboards, which after communications with the representative from the L G C A P, verified that they would all be able to get funded for heat pumps. So I'm just wondering, and now I see the very first that, that Area A would not be in it if it, if we don't join the, the regional growth strategy. So with all that, one of the things that our local community will have to do is fund a study, a G H E study on, on the reduction, to be able to apply for that funding. And it has to go through a regional district. So I think I, you know, so now we, I would like to discuss this with staff at one time. Thank you.
Thank you, Sal. Would you like to stand to answer all the question about being excluded? Yeah.
Thank you. So through the chair, just a point of clarification. Electoral Area A is not currently party to the regional growth strategy. They are, as part of the S L R D, the L G cap funds are implemented separately from the regional growth strategy. So they can be implemented anywhere in the S L R D as long as the requirements under the L G cap funding program and funding are being met, which they're really quite broad and they're a lot broader than they used to be in the past, which were really specific to infrastructure. Now they can be used for staffing plans, infrastructure pilots, like really they've opened the, in, in terms of how they're implemented. But where they're implemented in the S R D is, is absolutely open.
Thank you. So there's L G. And we have Director Rainbow.
Yeah, my, my question is, is about E V charging at the, at this location here. I see that's the second. But I noticed, because I noticed that back in May 2021, we had a, had quotes, but nothing had happened. And I see that we're going to apply for L G cap funding. But I just wondered, wonder how much, what would it cost to have this done? Because I don't want it to depend on being successful getting E G cap funding. We have it already to do that. Then, then, yeah, obviously there is a selfish interest in that I have an electric vehicle, but I'm not the only one. And by having something here, the, the, the regional district has a high grid as well, you know. Anyway, enough said. When's it going to be there? Thank you.
The question is how much is a cost? Please provide direction.
How much they cost? But I'm just assuming that we can provide the direction.
And I think Director Needham is telling me she's going to come up with a
Thank you. Through the chair, I'm just pulling up, we, the environmental services department did get a quote for an S R D E V charger. I'm just looking for the level two as per the E A D resolution.
Yes.
So there's a couple options here, but we're looking at between 7,000 and 12,000 in approximately for a level two charger. Here.
One, one charger?
For one.
Because of the rewire.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Director Stoner.
Uh, thank you through the chair, and thanks to staff for bringing this report and trying to collate the many years of various pieces of work under this file. My first question is, I appreciate the intent of trying to integrate this into existing areas of work. It really is foundational to so much of what we do. As I start my question with, we have had budget allocated for a position. Is, has it been difficult to fill that position because it's a part-time position, or is that why it's still vacant? Or is there, do we know a reason as to why it's vacant?
Yeah, the position wasn't actually transferred to the planning and development department, but the work was. The, I, I'm not sure if that position is still something that exists, but it, it used to fall within the yeah, the engineering department essentially, and then it shifted to, the work shifted to us.
Um, okay, I guess I'm just. I, yeah.
Yeah, the position.
Yeah, I guess I'm just trying to understand from like a staffing and capacity component, like there's already really full work plans. And I understand that I may be diving into the second phase of this discussion already. But I think what I'm trying to get at is that there has been commitment across multiple boards, including budget commitment. I think one of the things that I'm cognizant of in terms of integrating into existing work plans and while I appreciate the suggestion of integrating into the R G S, I think that makes a lot of sense. It is still a huge amount of work. And so how do we make sure that that is effectively resourced so that we can actually implement it and it doesn't get an overburdened? And so maybe my other form of this question is with the proposed R G S update for 2024, are there other elements that are being proposed to be included in that update? And/or would there be the opportunity to provide, use some of that rollover money to hire some consultant support to do a really like deep doubt, like deep dive lens on the climate action file with regards to the R G S? If the update is going to be more broad, I'm just trying to think about how we make sure that there's capacity there.
Thank you. I can, I can take a stop at the first piece. Through the, through the chair, the, and we will be coming to the board next month on the R G S review consideration. And we have a few items that, that are to be addressed, like they, they are outstanding board resolutions that have been, we've been waiting to action when we, when the review sort of period came forward. One was specifically around the G H D targets and then also around the potential addition of indicators. That's really the only specific direction we have right now. I think the typically our first step after going to the board and sort of gauging where that interest is, is to go to our, our G S steering committee and see, you know, what might be recommended from that group. The pieces of work that potentially connect in with the regional growth strategy review consideration I see are this climate action piece, as well as the, anything that may come out of the regional affordable housing forum that is also upcoming. So those are all three big pieces of work that could be connected or, or resulting in amendments or additional goals and strategies in our regional growth strategy. And I, and I might let Director Needham speak to any staffing aspects there. Yeah, I, I think that we can, we probably have the capacity within our existing staff to take on some of these tasks. And I think if we do opt for, say, installation of E V chargers, that would probably be handled by environmental services, engineering.
No, Sam's good. Thank you. Director Penningdale.
Yeah, thanks. And I guess a couple thoughts. And it may be just, I'm not sort of understanding the regional district context fully, but in Squamish, we did add the I P C C reference to our O C P, but we did it in such a way, understanding stuff is changing quite quickly. So we didn't reference particular numbers, but just that we will meet the sort of most current science sort of thing. And then our, our community climate action plan has things like E V chargers and all that sort of thing. And I'm a bit hesitant, and maybe it's not what we're talking about, but things like E V chargers and, and more specific numeric metrics. I hesitate to put those in the R G S. I understand we have a lot of constraints and so on. And so to me, putting that sort of high level target at the R G S level, but leaving the rest of the, the sort of tactics, I would call them into a plan or something, makes more sense to me. And, you know, we may have to be very realistic about what we go on our plan. But I also feel like right now, when we, we think of a lot of projects that are individually good things, when we do something, we try and do it in a good way, but there's no sort of like measurement against, hey, is this the most effective way to hit those I P C C targets? And I think that's a piece that we're missing. Be glad to see it in the R G S, would hope that, because I really work towards that without sort of saying, well, we can't work on it until it's in the R G S. But, uh, yeah, I guess that's my concern in some of this when, because it, what I think I'm hearing is that a lot of this would just move up into the R G S. And for me, the R G S is not adaptable and flexible enough. It, it's more of a longer term thing, whereas I imagine the climate action plan would have a lot more staff discretion in terms of how tactics move and change as we learn things and sort of see what works and doesn't. And, and so I, that's the one piece in all this where I have some hesitation. And I don't know if you have thoughts on that or.
I'll speak to that. So we do have other supportive documents within the S L R D. We have a line, a sust, um, corporate sustainability plan that was done probably 10 years ago. And it lines all, outlines all sorts of tactics. We also had an energy resilience task force probably a dozen years ago as well, and it had all sorts of tactics as well. So it's really just more of a matter of prioritizing. And so I think the R G S is high level and it does have a whole section on monitoring and indicators that look at how well we have basically implemented various things. And so I think that the tactics can be kind of picked up in, in other ways. And so for instance, if we talk about just using the L G cap funding for heat pumps or E V charging stations, those are just like kind of low hanging fruit that we can just, we can just do it. And it doesn't have to be contained within an R G S or, or anywhere else. And that's just something that we can do.
Excellent. Director Richmond, and then Director Rainbow.
Yeah, thanks. I think I'm both Director Stoner and Director Penningale touched on my, some of my concerns around incorporating within the R G S. And I was worried that it was a little bit of a, it was a capacity issue for you guys and, and, and an extra workload. And therefore was more efficient to, to, to combine it within the R G S. And my worries were similar to what Chris just said, you know, is it dynamic enough? Is it flexible enough? And you answered that well. So I appreciate that. I just, I guess, it's not, not much of a question left, left on that one because you've answered it. But maybe if it is a resourcing issue in terms of making sure that if it's resourcing capacity is the main driver to keep it in the R G S as opposed to efficiency. And then, then I would love to hear if the board can look at the resourcing part of it to make sure that some of these actions are, are, are easier to accomplish. In terms of the L G cap funding, well, quick question, what, how many vehicles do we have in our fleet here? Do we?
We have four or five.
So just with, with regards to the funding, you know, to me, the E V chargers is, is a really good direction for, for some of that funding. It'll allow us to really transform our fleet, or electrify our fleet more quickly. You know, that's, that's enough vehicles to warrant it. And I also wonder with, if we do go that route, if there's the ability to somehow and make those chargers available to the public, I mean, at some point. So just a consideration.
Thank you, Mike. Director Rainbow and Director France.
Yeah, I will follow on from what Mike was just saying. And when, when we first talked about E V chargers four years ago, nobody had an electric vehicle around this table. But we, we were talking, we were looking to the future and saying, let, let's take a leadership position. Let's get this in place now, and it will encourage. And, and we didn't do it. It, it has taken four years and we still haven't done it. But I, I think that, that should be part of our consideration, which, yes, I have a vehicle. And so you, you can dismiss what I'm saying as being totally self-interest. But I, I like to think I'm looking beyond that. And, and we know that the province is moving towards more and more, more, more electric vehicles. And we, we're going to need throughout the region, not just here at the office here, but throughout the region, we're going to need more E, E charging stations, you know. Staff drive over to, to Goldbridge. The, the range there, we, you're getting a pretty long range, you know. So if we're thinking about doing it here, we should probably be thinking about doing it at our properties in Goldbridge as well. And, and certainly not just looking at what have we got at the moment, let's satisfy that one will do. One won't do in a few years' time. So if we're going to do anything with, with electricity here, if we're going to bring in more, more power, which we would need to do, then we should be thinking of a bank of five or six of these things, similar to what they have over at the hotel. And yeah, once they're in place, then they should be available to, to other people. They should be available to the village. They should be available to, to the public. And it's easy enough to set up so that you pay. So that's what, what I've been encouraged us to do when we're, we're, we think of this, not just think of today's needs and today's demand, but, but to, to look to the future and, and, and to be able to say, yeah, we, we want to be ahead of the game here.
There's prompt and.
I, I like where we've gone as far as a conversation about the R G S because I think the R G S gives us very broad, high level direction about the way we do things. And in municipalities, large population centers mean decarbonization of buildings and, and transportation are the priority, and I think for, for good reason. I wonder if the same is true about regional districts that are as huge as ours. And if we're talking about like vehicle charging, are we missing where we can best contribute from a strategic perspective? So I'm thinking about conversations around the Meagre, Meagre geothermal project. And I guess my question is, have we spent any time investigating actions that our local government could take to promote the development of new renewable energy in the S L R D? And could that be where we have the most value to provide British Columbia?
Thank you. So through the chair, I, specifically on, on larger projects like renewable energies, S R D staff have not had an opportunity to explore that. I do think there are opportunities for us to think differently about regional districts than member municipalities in terms of our biggest impact on climate action, specifically when it comes to agriculture and food systems. You know, where we, the, the, all of our A L R lands are in the regional district. These are our food sources. This is our local food system. These are big spaces that we are impacting climate action on a daily. And the other one is just around growth management and directing growth to our urban areas and master planning communities. And those are probably our two most impactful. And those are probably our two most impactful on a daily, like part of our daily work, work. And so I I think there is a benefit in in looking at the the different ways regional districts and and municipalities can take action on in in this climate space. And the other piece is that we are a lot more limited in what data we have. And that's where we, when we come back to like, where where are we making big impact? The the regional growth strategy is required to have, we have a whole set of indicators and we're required to monitor them. And we are doing that every two to five years now, just because there wasn't data annually to make it worthwhile, to make the exercise worthwhile. But, you know, and we just saw that the climate, energy and emissions inventory was finally released after, you know, it was covering the period of, we haven't seen it since like 2009, I think, any data for our regional district around climate. So these are big, big gaps that we have had that are now coming forward from the provincial level to help inform some of our decision making, I think. But where there there is opportunity to think a little bit strategically about the regional growth strategy is that we we do have these sort of systems in place already to 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 monitor and a whole climate action goal. And I and I think it feels like we could be focusing energies on implementation rather than creating a new plan or another plan. And we saw when we had our Climate Action Coordinator, a lot of the work that was happening there felt duplicative to what we already had in the RGS. Or it was like, so so it's like, how do we? And and one of the things I've been thinking about is our is our agriculture plans. And we've been really, really effective at implementing them because they've had a real clear implementation strategy. And it feels like that's maybe the space that we're missing around climate action. And I don't know where, how that lands, but I think that they, our egg plants had really obvious and clear and opportunities to work with community groups and nonprofits to really take action annually. So probably good there.
Did you want to add something?
Yeah, I just wanted to add as well that, you know, I think because of the timing is of the essence with this funding, we basically have to use it or lose it, and we have like a year. So I think it's probably easier for us to focus on the low hanging fruit, the things that we, you know, can do quickly. Like if we were to, say, install a handful of EV chargers, maybe at our office and at some of our other buildings that we own around the region, and maybe look at heat pumps or just like really low hanging fruit that's sort of easy to source, easy to get estimates on and easy to just start implementation on.
A follow up question, yeah?
Well, just a comment. I I love where you guys have gone with that. I think that, you know, missing, as I thought, tried to think strategically, agriculture, growth management, taking advantage of low hanging fruit, those things make tons of sense. And when this does come back to us and we do have capacity, I would like to add that sort of approach, energy, like we're so well set up with all of these dams and 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 hydro infrastructure that goes through this region, that maybe if we look for ways to make our RGS better fit the opportunity entities that around new renewables and then those changes to the egg plants and growth management. I just think from a RGS perspective, you can actually have very, very significant impacts on climate throughout our province, which is pretty exciting. I I don't know if everyone in a large municipality even has that kind of capacity, which is exciting. I can't live without this egg. Thank you.
Thank you. I I really agree. I have Director Herford, Director Rainbow, and our CAO would like to say something about staffing. Go ahead, Armin.
Okay, I I think the, I really appreciate this this conversation and it covers a wide, such a wide range. So specifically to that low, the low hanging fruit piece, like kind of the the now pieces, I like the, I like where you're going there. I I would like to support the idea of chargers as more more broad, more broadly. We know that the province and municipalities and it's sort of making a big push that way. But given the the availability of charging in the broader areas, maybe this is a space where where the regional district can can play a role, whether that's at facilities or parks, wherever, wherever that low hanging fruit is from a implementation or getting chargers out there into the into the wild. So I'm supportive of that more broadly. And the ones here being as publicly accessible as is practical to still meet the needs of the of regional district, I think that's, I think that's great. In our, in uh in Squamish, during the development of our Community Climate Action Plan and the inventory phase was really, I found that process really, it's a big learning process for for myself and I think for our organization. But things like organic diversion was just huge and could have a huge impact as a as a goal. And just as we look at different pieces, there are these things that that part jumped out at me. I didn't realize it was that big of a of an issue. And the composting has gone way up in my house since the, you know, since this learning. So I think there's lots of, just so many pieces to this, and I do think that it's appropriate that we work to find to do that as we go into RGS and we integrate all those things. But the low hanging fruit now, I I think chargers, yes, that's been something that has, actually chargers have been a barrier to adoption in the larger centers where the population sort of might originate from and use them. But I do think it's a unique space we can possibly impact.
Director Rainbow?
Yeah, okay, chargers, heat pumps, no problem. I think we should move ahead with those kinds of things. But and and just a a comment about what, some action that we took with the recent zoning. We we said no fossil fuels to be used in 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 these new buildings, you know, for heating, for cooking, for everything. Which is good. I I have no argument with that. But our assumption is from that, that the electricity will take care of it. We've already seen that with climate change, there are problems with electricity generation in 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 the past. It's happening already. So 10 years' time, you know, we may not be able to just rely on hydro. So maybe now is the time for us to to be thinking about some alternatives. Now, and Director Crompton mentioned geothermal. I always, I used to think you had to be kind of close to a volcano to 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 benefit from something like that. But we visited a development in Surrey. There's nothing, no, no volcanic activity in Surrey. But this is a development there that the the whole thing is is uses geothermal. And they they basically, I say, just drill down into the earth and put something down there and bring something up. And in each, each unit, when you went to the boiler room or the furnace room, there's a little box on the wall, that big, just just stuck on the wall, and that's it. Now, it's not cheap. And and so people that were buying into that were paying for that unit over a 20 year period. So they had, they weren't getting their heat for free, they were paying for that unit. But still, over a period of time, one, it's guaranteed, it's there, they're not worried about power shortages or anything like that. And two, their 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 costs were were set. Well, that's not bad to have your cost, heating cost set for 20 years. So what can we do as an organization when we make those those zoning decisions? And you know, building someone, what can can we do to encourage a developer to to look at that as a a a source of energy for for that development? You know, there's nothing, nothing's happened at Tiger Bay yet, and it won't be for a while. Nothing's happened at Ferry, well, no, nothing's happened at Ferry Creek yet, and that's going to be a while coming. So maybe we still have time to to sort of insert ourselves into that process and say, let's look at this. What is the science? What is possible? What are the costs? And again, looking to the future, I I think that's that's something that would be worth sort of providing some leadership in. Thank you.
In Area B, solar panels work quite well, too. And as you know, I put them on the rec center. I ran for Area B in the hope to help the community, but also to help on climate change. I think there's definitely a role for our level of government. I have, now I have Director Crompton. No? Good. We're really grateful if we kept asking. You're asking from Director Crompton. Director Richmond and then Sal, I see you on the screen.
Yeah, I wanted to start moving us towards some of these specific resolutions. And I just want to say, I really appreciate the responses you guys have given, you really helped clarify some things in my head and separate out some direction personally. So we appreciate it. We know that in our region, our single biggest, you know, source of GHIs is is vehicles. So to me, that is, I don't know if I call it a low hanging fruit, but the one we want to, you know, attack. I I appreciate Director Crompton's direction and and how it can be incorporated, you know, renewables. And by the way, we do have a volcano. We got one of those. Oh, it goes a long way. So I do really hope that the RGS, that we can explore the renewables and 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 some of the directions that have been identified without repeating them. With regards to vehicle emissions and how we can make an impact on that, I guess my question is, I'll start with a question and try to get to a resolution. With regards to the low hanging fruit and the funding, there's, I think, general agreement around the board. Let's look at where we can implement or where we can install EV chargers throughout the region. You know, from the office to the south, to the north, you know, throughout the whole region. So what that would look like, you know, or some some potential plans for that, and therefore how much of the funding will require. This board has already put a good chunk of money from the community growth towards regional transit. So I think that's, you know, moving us in that direction already. But if there's other considerations from staff as we move through this, where some of the funding can be used towards transit throughout the whole region, we talked about the owl going away and, you know, what can we do in the north as well? So if there's any suggestions along those lines for some of the funding, I'd love to hear those. So I guess the question is, before we make a resolution saying, hey, let's use the funding for EV chargers, would it be easier at this point to send you away and go, come up with a little bit of a plan for that? That we could look at and see how much of the funding that uses? Or what would be the clearest and best direction from us for you on that?
Thanks. Through the chair, I think it would also be helpful in addition to, like, we we kind of know ballpark. Let's say 12,000 per charger, it might be a little bit more in the north. I think if if the board were also interested in the heat pumps, it would be helpful if Director DeMare might be able to provide a quote for some of the research he's done on the two buildings that he noted. And I think if we had all of those numbers, we could come back and say, hey, like, five chargers throughout the region plus two or three heat pumps, and this is what it's going to cost, and this is, you know, just as a ballpark. And then we have an ability to to move forward with that.
So my 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 motion therefore should be to direct staff to come up with a bit of a funding plan for chargers throughout the region as well as heat pumps. Now, does that make sense? Okay, I'll make that motion.
Yeah, seconded by Director Stoder. Anyone oppose or question?
If I add to that motion? I would like to add solar panels to that. I know that you touched on that. But I think that solar panels, chargers and heat pumps kind of all fit together and at least have some information coming back with those.
And where to be, they work like a charm.
They really do. So and I think moving forward, like, there is going to be issues with hy- hydro and especially with the way our, you know, our provinces is going with, you know, the 2030 now or 2035, those expectations, it's going to be harder on hydro. Why are we not looking at the sun?
Yeah, through the chair, I I think it would be helpful if the board does wish to pursue like an actual solar installation. We would need to know where, for what use, et cetera. It'd be helpful to have a specific kind of target project.
Maybe I suggest maybe be a separate motion on this to to pursue and then get some more information and then we could ask staff how that would look.
Okay, so hold that thought. And I'm not sure what to do here because I've got the motion that's been seconded, right? Another comment on the motion, go ahead, Jenna.
And I appreciate the direction of this, and I do agree, like, the low hanging fruit are the easy pieces. I actually think that it's more work packaged in than just like a list of low hanging fruit. Like, I think these questions come up of like, which of our SLRD locations are best suited in order to like reduce our climate footprint? There are some examples from Director DeMare, there are others within the region. And so I think this is where it gets really challenging, back to Director Penningale's point earlier of like, where is the most bang for our buck? And how do we evaluate that, like, from even just our local government perspective, let alone like the impact that our region has? But if we're going to invest in things like, if I need to decide between putting $50,000 towards EVs or solar panels on the joint SLRD Area C rec center, because you'd be actually be able to generate power for part of your community, I don't know which one's better. And so I think, I don't mean to put us in a position of like analysis by paralysis, but I do think there has to be some sort of staff report that comes back that does a bit of a broader evaluation. And I'm just cognizant of staff capacity to be able to do that or the information that we have to be able to inform that. So that's why I'm hesitating on this motion, because it feels like it's easy, but I'm not sure how easy it is. And that's a question to staff in the middle of.
To hear from our CAO about staff.
Sir, I I just had a question on the funding before we get to that. Is this particularly focused on our corp, or does it need to be focused on our corporate or could be more broadly? Or is it, is it broad enough requirement can be either, it can be the general public or our corporate?
Thank you. So through the chair, it is extremely broad. The scope supports Clean BC Roadmap, Climate Preparedness and Adaptation Strategy and Local Objectives. We we have, like, I have sat on a number of webinars and and different local governments have used it, the funding for specific, like, actual staffing or plans or infrastructure. It's like, sort of sky's the limit. So and and it could be corporate or it could be more public facing.
Just this comment, I was looking for something that might focus the conversation.
Not there. Thank you. Point and inquiry, though. What are we talking, what resolution are we talking about right now?
Director Richmond's.
The first one, just regarding the funding for the LG camp.
So we've skipped the Climate Action Framework, SLRD Growth Strategy.
I've skipped it and I just started.
Yeah, yeah, sounds good.
Go ahead, Heather, please.
Thank you, Director Chair. I just want to say that I appreciate your comments and your concerns about staff resourcing and capacity. And I just asked for the time to listen and learn and consider it, even with that to to the board in February.
The whole report?
No, just the consideration of staff time. So when I say forget back to the board, that might also include the budget.
All right, so I still have the speaker's list. I, there's a couple people. But I also have this resolution on.
On the resolution, but I think Director DeMare has.
Yeah, Director DeMare has had his hand up for quite some time.
So whether it's on this motion or if it's something.
Is it on the motion, Sal? You had your hand up before the motion was made.
Yes, that's correct. It was before the motion was made. And so it's more of a comment regarding Area A.
We'll hold off on that then until we finish on this resolution. And I could.
Well, it pertains, it actually pertains to that resolution. So, yeah. So during our tour, I mean, we went to the the complex. And if you notice, there was solar panels on it. So going back a number of years, there was a project, solar panel project that was done. It was also at the transfer station, as as everybody must have seen, that was on the tour. And it's also at the Halmor Heritage Site. They're all about the same size. And so that that has already been implemented, which was a really good, I was engaged in that whole process. The other, the other issue with this whole LG cap is that you have to do your legwork ahead of time. So talking about gaining quotes and so on and so forth, out in the middle of nowhere is. So talking about gaining quotes and so on and so forth, out in the middle of nowhere is going to be a challenge without having to pay for it. Some of these, because I've looked into it, and some of these, uh, uh, companies will say they come out for free, but it ain't going to happen out here. So that's what I was talking about earlier, using some of that money to do these studies and getting deep, uh, actually professional engineers out here that can look at these things and and, uh, come up with a an estimate of what they're going to cost. Um, you know, a- a- as, and that's what, uh, Director Needham said, you know, get it, get us a quote. Well, it's going to cost money to get a quote. And some of that funding could be used, um, you know, once we decide that, as per that resolution, um, that's been made. How are we going to, uh, see which ones are actually beneficial for the SLRD to actually do? So and that's not only for our area, but that's also for area B, area C and area D. And yes, I have had numerous people ask me about, um, EV chargers in our area, including one that wanted one of the boat launch because they're making, uh, EV boat motors up to ten horsepower now that are available. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. You might want to put another resolution forward to that effect. Other comments on the resolution, Jeff?
I heard, I think we all heard from staff that we've got some low hanging fruit. Let's take advantage of it now and then do the more structural stuff later. I I I think you're right in the long term, but this money needs to be spent, so let's spend it on what's most straightforward and then do a lot of that work soon if we can. But I heard heat pumps charging, like, go, 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 which made sense to me.
And Director Pettingill, I had on the list, but I.
Not on the resolution.
Okay, good. Carmen?
Sure. Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to be clear, this this will give staff direction to come back to us with the steps. Because I I'm I'm not all the way there on the on the heat pumps. When I look at the, like, how much emissions possibly come out of one of our buildings from a corporate perspective, I have a really hard time thinking about pushing that way back, having an impact more broadly. And when I think about how wide the net, the net can be cast on this particular funding, we know we have, um, we have fire prevention and preparedness, um, work to do for resiliency for communities, that that works underway and has some guidance. But if we think about how broad we could use this, maybe it's chargers and amping up some of that. Like, there's other ways to go here. I'm not all the way there on the heat pumps. I'll support the motion. I think it's worth investigating. Uh, however, we have all these other things that we are also doing that aren't, again, to SaaS points earlier, or and I really appreciate that. Our work daily, uh, or monthly for us, uh, folks is, you know, on the the egg egg plant. Like, all that, all that stuff is, you know, those are can be climate actions if we are conscious of that as we go about our decision-making process as well. So, um, I'm not all the way there on the heat pumps. I'll support the motion, but I just wanted to flag there's these other pieces that we are doing that, um, we could also amp up. And we are, from even invasive species work, I think, might even, which is recovery. Like, there's all these things that that we can do with it, and I'm not sold on the the heat pump for specific buildings yet at this point.
And we have a feasibility study on the landfill to go to organics. You know, there's lots of, there's lots of pieces and and what's most effective, yes. Uh, Director Stoner?
Ms. Balsch, just read the motion back.
Okay.
Uh, that staff develop a plan, including next steps for LG cap funding that considers EV charging stations and heat pumps for SLRD facilities and bring back to a future meeting.
Motion, Mike?
Where you go, Mike?
Well, I'd like to hear from Ms. Dewar first.
Um, through the chair, I I was curious about the SLRD facilities because I did hear there might be a desire to have that more broadly in the electoral areas, not just at SLRD facilities. On that motion, I was just curious, are we just wanting the SLRD facilities?
Should we just delete facilities? Is that?
The whole thing because question for the board, whether, like, it seemed like there were two, there's there's two potential ideas or maybe they're the same, whether we want to explore EV chargers just at SLRD facilities or EV chargers throughout the electoral areas.
Director Richmond, what was your?
I I'm, to me, it was broad. It was the broader of the two. It was throughout the region, if that's not too honest.
So can the resolution be read that way, Ms. Balsch?
Definitely.
Okay.
Do you like, read it again?
Read it again.
Yeah, and and as long as we get the essence of it, I can work closely with the planning, um, department to ensure that it does have, um, the bits and pieces, so it's actionable. But, um, that staff develop a plan, including next steps for LG cap funding that considers EV charging stations and heat pumps throughout the region and bring back to a future meeting.
And you just said some aggression there. Is there a sense that this LG cap funding might be renewed or is this?
So through the chair, that that was one piece that I did want to add to the conversation. It's not, um, confirmed, but it does sound like this will be an ongoing funding source. And so we have the opportunity to to have this, like, what are our things we can action now that are kind of low hanging fruit? Knowing that this may be an ongoing funding source for us to think more strategically and long term and integrate into some more sort of strategy framework piece.
Brilliant. Director Pettingill?
Yeah, just a clarification. So I appreciate most of the update or clarification on the resolution. And for EVs throughout the region, EV charging, that's, I can wrap my head around that. But when we say heat pumps throughout the region, are we talking only regional district buildings in that case?
Yes.
Still, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Good follow question. All in favor? Opposed? And Sal, I see your hand up on the screen. Are you in favor of the resolution?
Uh, I'm okay with the resolution, but I would like to make a comment after we're done.
Okay, we're just going to say that resolution is passed and go ahead with your comment briefly, please.
Yeah, um, I've been at this for, I mean, I I had to take a break from it uh, on on the heat pump systems, um, during the wildfire and I got back into it again. We have our grant writer looking into it. And she's actually going to be, uh, communicating with LG cap regarding, uh, nonprofit organizations and and also, uh, regional district and how this whole process works. And, uh, we've got a whole bunch of nonprofit organizations in the valley, between our fire departments, the community club, uh, the BPMO building that is really urgent to to have the heat pumps in it because it's all baseboard heaters. And, uh, so we've got all these community groups and so she's looking into it. And and specifically how it relates to the regional district. Uh, because the the SLRD has to submit. And that's what, um, for the application. And that's the conversation that I was having with, uh, Director Dalton, uh, or CAO Dalton back before, um, we had that wildfire. Because I've been looking into it for, uh, uh, close to a year now. Because, uh, like I mentioned before, I want to see some action in the, uh, Bridge River Valley also on on, uh, climate action. And that's one that we can tackle for sure. But, um, a- and and again, the funding that's out there isn't full funding for the projects. It's it's a percentage of the funding. So that whole concept of being able to get extra funding to do some of this work is going to be challenging for us in the Bridge River Valley. So that's, I just made that comment. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. I asked her to add the hub to that investigation too as a potential. And Director Crompton, any comment, question?
Um, I was going to go to the resolution about the RGS.
Yeah.
If that's okay.
Yeah.
Um, try and provide some direction. I want to test two resolutions and have and ask that staff tell me these are already, we're already doing this, so we don't need a resolution. Or yeah, that would be helpful. The first is that through policy, through the, through policy update processes, staff be directed to pursue amendments to the RGS and OCPs that will provide and attract applications for renewable energy projects. And that through a policy update process, staff be directed to pursue amendments to the RGS egg plans and OCPs that will promote and attract applications that decarbonize agriculture. Are those two, like, we're already doing that or is that additive?
I I think, through the chair, I think our, uh, policies in our RGS, and I'd have to look at it more carefully. But I think we already have policies that are supporting renewable energy, et cetera. So, um, yeah.
I don't need to move those then.
Director Stoner?
I have another motion for consideration. It may be a little bit more high level. That staff be directed to pursue integration of the SLRD climate action framework within the SLRD regional growth strategy and RGS review consideration of twenty twenty-four. And if it's seconded, I'll speak to it.
Option.
Seconded by Director Rainbow, and let's just give Ms. Balsch a chance. You've got it.
I haven't emailed it to her yet, but I know.
This is so smart.
Okay, it's slightly reframed.
Did you call that question?
The wording. So I'll just speak to her. The wording in the in the package is asking for direction. I think the way that I just reframed it provides the direction for staff to pursue. And I heard from Ms. Dewar that she'll be back, uh, next month with the overview of the RGS review. And I think that helps to start guide the conversation of how we do this and gives her direction.
Thank you, Jenna. Uh, Director Pettingill?
Yeah, just, and this maybe will go to the comment I I had waiting, um, uh, and just my understanding, so again, I'm comfortable with the discussion about keeping the RGS high level and maybe a reference to IPCC, sort of best science on an ongoing basis. Um, I don't necessarily need a climate action plan, but to me, there's something more detailed than the RGS, a discussion that needs to happen. And in my mind, a part of that discussion may just be like, in our sustainability plan, all these, we already have fifty climate-related actions. We can realistically only do five of them, so we need to decide what are those five and understand that that's the best. And so just understanding that, as long as I have comfort that that work is going to happen somewhere, it doesn't have to be in that specific plan, that's fine. To me, to my mind, that isn't RGS work, that's below an RGS, like more specific than an RGS. Um, that's more strategic planning, like you may, I want more flexibility on those five things as we learn to adapt. Where with the RGS, I would feel more comfortable at the, again, the IBCC numbers. And then, you know, um, in terms of indicators, like a thirty percent reduction in GHGs across the region, that's the sort of level of, in my mind. And so if that's what we're talking about, I'm okay with it, but.
All right, let's do this.
Through the chair, and this just provides, um, well, it for, it speaks to Director Crompton's sort of question around, um, you know, do we have strategies or goals out there around renewables? And then also maybe just what does our RGS say to help kind of understand, um, you know, I guess, the level of detail that we have in our RGS and how that might be implemented fast. Um, so I'm just going to read one, um, this is under the climate, um, action goal. And, um, so this is, says, encourage the development and use of renewable energy across the region. This will be pursued through partnerships and in consultation with communities, exploring options at both the building level and greater system level. It may include advancing opportunities to incent small-scale renewable energy production and use, exploring new technologies through pilot projects and supporting provincial building code extensions and other tools to facilitate renewable energy systems in local development and construction. That's just an example of, um, the strategic directions that we have in our regional growth strategy. And we haven't seen much action there. So this is where we struggle at staff, is we have a lot of great content that isn't, we're not necessarily seeing action on.
And for action, Director Herbert?
Thank you. I'm supportive of this motion. I think that, um, what gives me pause sort of in this overall is that we have all done all this work as as, um, we heard earlier, we're working on, we're missing that implementation piece and the prioritization of the work that's already been done. So I I think this motion is great and is part of this overall equation and discussion that we're having. But I want to make sure, I just want to highlight that we need to, that I I feel strongly that that we need to, um, have that prioritization uh, work done and then an implementation, um, plan for all the, for, I don't know how wide you cast that that net. But if we have, you know, a hundred recommendations and the capacity to do three, we would be sure that we know which of those three we're going to do. And I I'm not quite seeing where that is going to boil to the surface yet in their discussion today, though, make sure that we that we get there. So I think this is a good step, but, um, I don't have a resolution to that and yet I want to turn everyone's mind to that piece because we've heard that a lot of work has happened, but the next steps into, you know.
Thank you. I have Director Stoner, then Director Rainbow, and then Director, no, I'll take Director Rainbow.
Uh, um, yeah, I I just want to, I guess I'm following up on what, um, Herbert just said. I like, I like discussing things. I, as much as anybody, you know, I think, I think it's great and we end up with these great plans. But I do agree, we we we've got to move beyond that, get into action and look to where we can actually do something. And I think when we do things, um, you know, I mentioned leadership earlier. And I I think we we should be looking at ways in which we can provide leadership, when we can do something, brag about what we've done. Um, sort of encourage other sectors, other people, other parts of the community to maybe do the same kinds of things. Um, and I just mentioned this, eight eight years ago, um, the person that was in in Omar's position now uh, was interested in, uh, in solar, solar energy. And as a result of that interest, uh, we ended up having, uh, funding a study in Britannia Beach to, um, power the wastewater treatment plant with 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 solar panels. And and the study concluded that, yes, that would be a good idea. And and so they were installed. If you drive through there now, you look and you can see them on the roof. Um, I've never seen a report of, um, the effect of that, but I I'm pretty sure, do you, does it provide all of our power for a a large amount of, no, I'm not quite sure, but we'd be be interested to find out. But, um, as a result of that sort of leadership, uh, uh, saying to the community, this is what we're looking at doing here. The Mining Museum ended up installing, um, sort of piggybacking on our work, installing solar panels on on top of their store with the intent of removing the the propane boiler they had that warmed the water for their little, um, attraction where kids are pounding for gold. And and the initial study said, well, if you put these panels up there, you'll have enough power to to do that that job. But what ended up doing was providing enough power to provide, to to power their whole, um, entrance way and their cafe and and their their store. And that wouldn't have happened if we hadn't taken that that sort of leadership role and and published what we were doing. And and we have, we have some power there. Uh, uh, this is important. Climate change and climate action is important. We know that. But we should be looking at ways in which, when we do things, we we can, uh, multiply their.
Director Richmond?
Thank you. Um, you can call a question first if you want.
Let's call the question. That was Jenna's motion. Uh, all in favor? Opposed, defending? Seeing none, motion carried?
One of the reasons I asked about the the LG cap funding is because as we were talking, I hear the low hanging fruit, talking about most emissions coming from vehicles. Um, I, I, the reason I was asking this, my thought process was, if that funding is renewed, can we then use it to do, to really sort of, uh, ground some of these these statements in our RGS to prioritize some of our, what was to look at? Uh, whether solar is 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 one of the low hanging fruit for the next round, that sort of thing, to 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 promote some of these initiatives. So I'm hopeful that the the funding will come around again. And then when it does, that will be sort of what I would like to bring to the table. Let's use that to really focus our attentions here and come up with the top five and.
Let's do Jenna's.
I'd like to move that the board direct staff bring back the follow-up report outlining the next steps and budget work plan implications through a future committee of the action received on the climate action part one, current contacts and opportunities report.
Seconded.
Yeah, seconded by her.
I'd like to thank Ms. Dewar for the very great.
The hint.
And, uh, yes, I'm just say that out loud again. Thank you, yes, to staff for the view for this excellent report and it's good work. Thank you, yes, to staff for the view for this excellent report and it's good work. And it's everyone in favor of that resolution. Opposing, that motion carried. Thank you. Jenna, did you want to change something?
Uh, well, I also see staff speaking. I did skip over the two, two of the resolutions before this. One, because I feel like there's a lot of moving pieces and I think we've had some really broad discussion around budget and staff. And I don't know if we can get more concrete around this table at this point. Um, so I just wanted to make that clear as to why I didn't move those two, but I will move the last one on our agenda, which is that the board rescind the following previous climate action resolutions.
Seconded.
All in favor? Oppose? I shouldn't say all in favor, excuse me. Opposed, seeing none, motion carried. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
We have a big topic coming up. I think I have to add.
Oh, you mean that wasn't the big topic?
Another big topic. That's, that's really, I'm so happy that we're working on that.
Five minutes.
I need five minute break, yeah. Okay, we're back to order at item six point three. In the committee, the whole agenda, regional budget meeting. And I'm looking at the screen. For Suzanne LaFrance, welcome. And we are ready for you, Suzanne. Please proceed. Welcome.
Oh, everybody, Suzanne LaFrance, Director of Finance. And we're going to go through the first regional budgets for twenty twenty four, the first meeting. Um, I think I will share my screen and go through it that way, if everybody's okay with that. And just let me know if you can see my screen.
Not yet.
Is it yet?
No.
I'll try again, one second.
And we can work through it that way. So I think you're getting there. And staff's also available to.
All right.
Very good. Then we can see it.
Okay, great. Okay, so this meeting will discuss the regional budgets, which is, which is the general government services, the regional base of species management, the land, land planning and zoning, regional solid waste management, and the utilities environmental services department, which is a fully clearing department. Um, and the regional transit planning and infrastructure service, and also the regional growth strategy and the sea to sky trails, noting that regional growth strategy is all participants except for area A and that sea to sky trails does not include area A, B, or District of Lilowatt. So we received the twenty twenty four B C assessments completed role in January. And I did make an error here. So the total change over twenty three and twenty four is only one point six eight percent.
I'm good.
And, uh, I did review the non-market change associated with the twenty twenty four completed role. And I'll just open up this spreadsheet here. So their total change in the twenty twenty three versus twenty twenty four completed role is a bit different because their twenty twenty three includes supplementary changes to their twenty twenty three revised role, which are not included in my revised role. So this is the difference between the cycle ten twenty twenty three assessments that DC assessment has and my twenty twenty three revised role was fifteen thousand, fifteen million, three hundred twenty one thousand, seven hundred forty five less. So there was appeals, obviously, since the revised role. The revised role is what the constituents are billed, are taxed on. And so the total change is one point seven two as per DC assessment. And of that one point seven two, one point five nine percent was due to the market change. So you could safely say the majority of that increase was due to market change, even though there is obviously, sorry, non-market change, even though there's obviously some market change built in with that. Um, but it ended up being only point one three percent of total all property classes was actually a change due to market. So that's favorable in the sense that these, uh, these non-market change assessment changes will increase the capacity of that tax base to absorb some of the tax increases this year. I did go down into each area and look at each area's specific inventory increases. Um, does the board want to go through these or they're all pretty minor except for area C? Area C shows the biggest inventory changes. Um, so maybe I'll just jump down. I'll just quickly go over area A total of total non-market change and for inventory specifically is only point two four percent. So most of their change was market related. Area B, same, same idea. It's only point five one percent non-market change, whereas the total change was ten percent um, in assessments. And then area C, you see there's actually three point eight six percent was inventory, non-market change. And most of it actually was in residential with some, um, reduction in the farm assessments. And area D, um, a small portion, only one percent of all property taxes was inventory. And Squamish also very small percentage, point eight seven percent. Uh, Whistler, point four four percent. And Lilowatt, point seven nine percent. Pemberton had, uh, a smaller increase, one point seven eight percent of inventory for a non-market change. Uh, and I'm going to skip over the requisitions for now and I'll get back to those in a bit. I'll just talk broadly about all of these budgets. They, they include a CPI increase of three point four percent in salaries, which in, in effect will increase the benefits, which are in relation to the salaries. I've also increased the benefits eight percent. Um, during the last extended health benefits discussion with our provider, there was talk of a, an increase coming because the total usage of dental and healthcare has increased. So to be safe, I added this eight percent increase as, uh, to the extended health and dental benefits. And very importantly, the twenty twenty three forecasted figures are going to change. It's not, it's not a guess. They are going to change. So this is not the final product. Um, this is the first go around and it's very fast to produce these. And so I actually found some errors in the, um, general government budget that was presented in this package. Um, I was not feeling a hundred percent about this budget going across the agenda. And I wanted to delay it as a late item, but it was decided to just send it through so, so the board has opportunity to review it over the weekend. And noting that this is not the final budget by any means. Um, so I'll go back into the requisitions for now and then we'll start with general government details. I'll stop if there's any questions at this point. I don't see any hands, but just in case. Okay. So the tax requisition increase for general government currently shows a thirty three point five percent increase or seven hundred sixty one thousand dollars, just to round it up. And there was errors spotted after the fact, like I mentioned, and it was due to many transfers from reserves due to board resolutions, not having the expense side entered into the budget. And so I've done a control measure and I've actually adjusted the budget to catch all these. And in the end, it was seventy three thousand dollars more of a deficit to this budget. So this seven hundred sixty one thousand is actually seven hundred sixty one plus seventy three thousand. Is eight hundred and thirty four thousand. And this is just the preliminary budget for now. There are opportunities for savings, so I'll just go into the details of the general government budget. Um, the surplus carry forward, basically, I'll discuss quickly, is just the revenue increases, mostly, um, grants and lieu and time allocation. And then also the surplus carry forward have increased since the twenty twenty two forecast was completed. So the surplus carry forward is from twenty twenty two. And basically that is, that figure is devised by the surplus, sorry, by the forecast for twenty twenty two. And there were some errors in the twenty twenty two forecast. So there was actually revenue added in to the twenty twenty three surplus carry forward. And, uh, there was also some savings in twenty twenty three operational costs, um, mainly salaries. But there's also some operating savings as well as some operating deficits. And then there are carry forward projects as well, which I've listed in the next pages coming. So for potential savings, uh, we do have a new project for unit four, which I'm hoping we can push through. It's for implementing the purchasing order module in unit four, which is our financial software at the SLRD. And I've estimated this to be forty thousand because it includes training for SLRD managers and staff that will be responsible for putting through purchase orders and then obviously receiving invoices and matching them. I feel like this is an important project because right now, since we've been remote, the purchase order system has fallen into nobody using it because it used to be, um, actual written purchase orders. And I feel we have to electronic, we have to build some type of electronic means to build, to have purchase orders now. And having it within the financial software will help finance department as well because we'll know exactly what's still to come. Right now, we're kind of guessing as to what expenses we're missing for the year. But with a purchasing order module, we'll, we'll know, like, these are actually coming still and we can accrue them as an expense. But that's forty thousand dollars of an additional project included in twenty twenty four. Did anybody have any questions on that project?
Same Suzanne.
All right. And the next potential savings is with the asset management software implementation. So we, we have the hundred thousand dollars of growing communities fund to source a software for asset management, as well as twenty thousand of the, um, community works funds. That was a previous board resolution. So a hundred and twenty thousand total. Um, we still have to go out and view what these asset management softwares are valued at currently. The last I heard was about a hundred thousand dollars and about twenty thousand plus for implementation, depending on who's all going to be using this. This all depends on how many staff are need to be trained on the new software. But I inadvertently added forty thousand dollars into the IT support as well for this asset management software implementation. So there's potential to save forty thousand dollars on that IT support line. And I'll just go to that budget really quickly. Oh, come on. So I'll show you where, um, I have that extra support. So within this, I, within, I'll start with the software. Within IT software, there is that asset management, um, software in here and that is hundred percent recovered through revenues. But within IT support, I added, um, forty thousand for asset management implementation, which I believe we can probably decrease. So there's savings there that I plan on, um, on reviewing and updating when it comes to the board in February. But I anticipate at least a thirty thousand dollar increase in savings. So there's that one item I wanted to discuss. And then we might be able to save some funds on licensing. So CAO don't purchase that, um, performance management software, government frameworks. And we're hoping that we can put a pin on that because we haven't been able to implement it yet fully. So to spend money on licensing that we're actually not even using, we're hoping that we can potentially get away with not spending that on the licensing fees this year. And then it, then slowly implementing it in twenty twenty four. Um, but that is not a, that is just a unknown at this point. And Sal, you had a question?
Yeah, it's not so much a question, but just a comment. That, this, this performance manager software, um, you know, it is so important for our organization. Um, we've fumbled around and fumbled around and it, and this program is there to organize uh, us in a meaningful way. I would like to see it move forward.
Mm-hmm. This is not to not move it forward. It's to allow us a little break because we haven't been able, able to implement it at all because with the staff capacity, but we do realize it's very valuable. I really am excited about it, especially with trying to get out of emails. Right now, we're stuck with everything coming through emails and with something electronic, we have more of a database and more, um.
I'm, I'm just curious on what the restraints are on, on staff that we can't implement it.
Well, we don't have the staff capacity. That's all I can say. Right now, I'm working on the Agresso unit four upgrade, which is, I'm barely having capacity to do. And so we only have one IT specialist who isn't a software person. So there is staff capacity issues.
Yeah, well, I, I'd like, um, uh, as you mentioned in there, the, the new, the new, uh, CAO hopefully will, uh, review it. And I, I would like to see it implemented. Because it is so important. You, there's so much wasted time that, you know, like you, you just, you just mentioned that would make the, our, uh, all our staff more, more, um, effective with their time.
For sure. And it's not to stop the implementation. We still want the fifteen thousand to assist with the implementation, so we have to contract this out. But it's just the licensing fees that we're looking to get a pause on because we paid last year with nothing, no product. So paying again this year, we're just, there's just a possibility right now. I just wanted to make, make note.
Just curious on what is the licensing fee per year?
Uh, I think it's forty nine thousand.
And Ms. LaFrance, Director Penningill had a question.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I'm just curious, when you said there's a potential savings on the IT support for the asset management, i- is that because, does that mean like the contract costs are just lower than we thought possibly? Or is that because, uh, we're just going to have less support and staff are going to try and do it on their own? Like, I'm just wondering if that savings is coming at the cost of a, you know, actually lowering capacity. Because we're. because we're putting more work or, or I'm just, like, is this a true savings or?
Yeah, it was a rough estimate of what the implementation would cost. And I think that with the growing community spend resolution, it did include implementation costs as well. So I'm hoping that we can use that hundred thousand for most of that implementation. It's hard to know what the software is going to cost at this point because we haven't put out to tender.
Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, I, I support trying to get a pause on this. I think we all remember the resume of our new CAO, which is long on IT. And so I'm sure she'll want to review a lot of this work and understand whether or not this, what's the direction she wants to take the organization. Not everyone gets on her CAO that's got a deep an IT skill set as President Paul has. And so I think that makes sense to me. I'm looking forward to hearing back whether or not she feels that the frameworks is the right tool to use and what those implications look like. So support the, the direction.
All right. And the, another addition to the twenty-twenty-four budget was for increased Indigenous Relations Cultural Awareness Training for all corporate staff, and that was an estimate of fifteen thousand dollars. There is also a records management audit and contracted assistance as twelve thousand dollars added to the twenty-twenty-four budget. And it's due to losing Nikki Madigan, so she was our records management person. And we haven't had anybody in since then, and we really need someone to do an audit and assist us with our records. And also the recruitment and retention expense, I, I pushed through the twenty-five thousand dollars into twenty-twenty-four, but we could potentially lower that as well. We did use all the twenty-five thousand last year for the CAO search, and it was actually over budget. It went, you know, we spent more than the twenty-five thousand dollars. But that's an option as well for the board to think about if we want to reduce recruitment and retention expenses for twenty-twenty-four. Hoping that we don't have to do another CAO search or big salary search. And then we also have a project for both staff remuneration reviews and board remuneration reviews, including benefits, I believe. And so a total for both was added as thirty thousand dollars into the twenty-twenty-four budget. So just as a note, the community, the previous climate action projects that were budgeted using the LG cap in general government, these were started, I believe, in twenty-twenty. No, budgeted in twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three. They've been removed and just the project has been moved to land planning and zoning. So under Director of Kim Needham's Department now and still using eighty percent of the LG cap, which is the maximum usage of that fund. So there is also potential savings with the regional connectivity project. Forty-one thousand is still in the budget for twenty-twenty-four, although there is no more restart grant to offset this expense. So it is another expense item that could be reduced by either taking it off the budget or producing it to a different type of project. And Sal, you want to speak to this?
Yes, yes. I'm okay with taking it off the budget, but like I've mentioned before, I'd like to see that task put on the fuel. So we don't lose it because we're one of the few regional districts that hasn't done connectivity study. And we definitely have issues up here in the Bridge River Valley. Thank you.
Thanks. I'm just curious if I can get consensus of the board that we can, we can remove this from the twenty-twenty-four budget and maybe place it in twenty-twenty-five when I, when I bring back the five-year plan in February.
Yes, we're getting nods around the table here.
I just say, I thought that, that Director de Maire's idea of just putting it on the fuel, not necessarily even to come back in twenty-twenty-five, unless it goes through that fuel process that we're talking about. I, I, it would be unfortunate if it just kept being kicked forward to budget to budget. It'd be better, I think, to have it in that, in that fuel.
Okay, I'll review, I'll review both options. I just don't want to have it drop. Yeah. All right, so there is also potential for savings if we draw from the operational surplus, surplus reserve, which is four hundred and forty-nine thousand, just to make it simple, we'll call it four hundred and fifty thousand at the end of twenty-twenty-three. You know, we don't have a plan for these funds and technically it's for operating whenever we need the funds with board, board approval for pulling these funds. So we could use some of these funds this year to offset any general government taxation increase and then pull more funds if, if required in future years to build up that balance again. I'll leave that for discussion in February because I'll have a better idea of where we're at, at that point. And the various carryover projects include an employee handbook review and update. The boundary expansion work, so this thirty thousand dollars is on the budget since twenty nineteen, I want to say. And it's because sometimes we have to jump at boundary expansion changes. So if there's municipal boundary expansion and we have to adjust our SLRD services, we have to be able to do that work at any moment's notice. But there is options to potentially reduce that thirty thousand as well. And Sal, you have a question about that?
Yes, I do. I'm just wondering if that, that couldn't be taken off? And then if something does happen, we just go into our operational surplus reserve.
Yep, so we'd have to just bring a resolution of the board to use that surplus reserve when needed. But that's an option as well to just take that off of the general government expenses. Does anybody else have any feelings, yes or no, about that?
No plans within the VOP at this time, so it's not like, you know, if, if none of the municipalities are looking that direction, I think Director de Maire's direction is good.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. When was the last time that was, that was used? When, but we actually used it.
I believe it was with the Village of Pemberton's boundary expansion changes. And I don't remember what year that was. I want to say twenty-seventeen.
Yeah, something like that.
Right, so this is a, if this is a one, you know, if the, the pace thus far has been at one in, whatever that is, six, seven years, then I think as long as we have a reserve that we can, we can pull from, it doesn't necessarily need to be tax for, so I think I'm okay with the resolution.
I recall that a few years ago, there was some mention that Squamish was considering something. I, I think that was why it was in there. But so if you're not considering it now.
Yeah, there was.
I believe it was originally added in the response to increased work that was happening by a proponent outside of the district to squamish boundaries, uh, which is now currently, uh, under foreclosure from, in a court sale of some sort. So I don't see it as a.
It's not imminent, I wouldn't say in Squamish.
Um, so I'm happy to put it back to, uh, I don't think we need to carry forward or touch. I think it can just be an operation or surplus.
And I'm hopeful that any municipality that is considering would bring it forward and give a heads up so that we could look at it as part of a budget in the future.
Yeah, exactly. Thirty day. Seventeen boundary expansions.
I don't know if that resolution was made, but I mean.
Is that a consensus decision here? Is that, is that enough direction, Suzanne?
I think she said it requires a resolution.
Okay, you'd like a resolution? And didn't Suzanne make that resolution?
Sorry.
Mike made the resolution.
Sir, I thought the resolu-, I thought the resolution part was, that's what it would take to fund this should we need it. But we can just remove it through our, yeah.
Okay.
So yeah, I'll just, I'll remove that boundary expansion work in the next iteration of the budget. And then we have five thousand remaining for the upgrade of unit four. I don't think I'll use that whole amount, but I, I do like to keep it. We're still going through some failed tests with the new unit four. And so we have some consultants helping with us with those tests and fixing the, the new upgrade. And then we have website development, which is a carryforward. Some of this is offset with COVID restart grant. I, I believe it's only a small portion, though. And we will remove the regional connectivity project as well and then have that on the fuel. And there's five thousand for a communications plan that's also been carried forward. And I, I think that's a small enough amount. We can, we can keep that as potential expense in communications.
Can we just go back to the website development cost of forty thousand dollars? Are we removing that?
No, that's staying. Yeah, no, that's staying. Yeah. We're halfway through our website development. It started in twenty-twenty-three and it was budgeted at sixty K in twenty-twenty-three. And we're about, we've, we're about three quarters of the, uh, maybe one quarter of the way through. And that's the gist of the general government budget. Is there any other questions specific to the actual line items or any other questions at all about the general government budget?
Director Penningill, yeah.
Just taking a, a step back from a philosophical perspective, but we, you know, talked about this may be a more significant budget this year, still some more drafts to come. Uh, talk about some areas for savings, but my understanding from the discussions we've had is that we need to make significant investments in our capacity. We're getting some this year, but it's nowhere near all of them. So I'm presuming we shouldn't be thinking if we just get through this year, sort of back, like, we've got a few years of expansion, capacity building. And so that should be in the back of our mind when we think about, oh, we can push this off till next year because next year might be a, a full year as well. Is that accurate?
Yeah, and what I failed to mention is there is the new grant writer and comms position within this budget. And so it is as a full-time for the full twelve months. And I think I will adjust that position to be just for what we feel we can hire at, which is probably looking at April now. So it'll just be nine months. So I'll reduce that salaries amount too. But is the board in favor of adding that comms position, which will also help with grant writing? It'll be a shared position to assist the director of communications with her numerous requirements for communicating.
We need a bit more time on that, on that question.
Okay, okay. So I'll just, um, I'll reduce it to the nine months and it'll be back in February for more discussion. Other than that, the only other unfilled position that is within these, these salaries right now is the IT manager. And with the CAO's IT skills, I'm excited to discuss that position further with her. And we'll, and we'll, we'll come back, we'll, we'll come back with some more details and updates in, in February.
Yeah, thank you. Just, um, thinking as broadly as I can about, about this. The option to spend some of the surplus, operational surplus, I think is interesting. But I'd like to understand what the, like, what, what the five year is and how we kind of can use that to smooth in some of some of this. And perhaps there's expenses that are this year that drop off. And, you know, like, I'm just trying to understand this more, more broadly. But in general, I think if we've taxed for it, we should spend it in a responsible way and not just, um, you know, we're not, we're not here to accumulate that. We're, you know, you've got the, the broader responsibility. So, um, but without that, sort of the next couple of years pieces there, I'm not sure how, how to rank its appropriateness at this point.
Yeah, I think it'll be more clear when I bring the five-year financial plan. And then I can actually show how it would work when I pulled some of that reserve. And we can then gradually increase the transfer to that reserve. But, um, yeah, with, um, and I will think of other uses of that reserve as well to build a plan. Because I, I as well don't like just seeing, seeing the funds sitting, you know, without a plan to use them. And the other thing I did add was additional funds for more board tours. I think that was requested for twenty-twenty-four. And so that's why there's, uh, from previous budget, there's ten thousand dollars additional added. Um, so I think I will leave the general government budget for now. I have some good direction and I'll come back with a better, um, product. Apologies for the errors. And we'll go to, uh, the planning budget. So land planning and zoning is cost under twelve hundred. They did have a surplus carryforward so far estimated at two hundred and eighty-four thousand, eight hundred ninety-five, which is combination of increased revenues over budget, savings in operating, operating expenses, and then carryforward projects. Um, the salaries do include a unfilled planner position that's been carried forward for a few years and that Kim has, and Director of Planning has utilized for contract assistance, say, throughout the summer when she needs additional assistance. Um, so I'd like to keep that available if, if there was additional need for capacity for twenty-twenty-four, especially looking at the new LG cap information, she might need to contract some assistance. Do you have a question on that, Sal?
Not on that one particularly, but I'm looking at the carryforward projects. Could you explain what the bylaw enforcement for short-term rental injunction cost of forty-five thousand are all about?
So this is a carryforward project for many years. And there was, uh, basically because of the short-term rental uh, legislations, I'm assuming. I don't know if Kim is still in the room that can speak to this a little better than I could. But it was decided to keep this in case we need to fund for overviewing the short-term rental issue, whereas right now, I don't believe, I wish, I, I can't really speak to it any further actually because I don't know the details. Okay, great. Thank you, Kim.
Yeah, thanks. Through the chair, uh, this was put in place, uh, a few years ago, partly to deal with enforcement against, uh, short-term rentals, which were at one point kind of getting out of control. But it's been kept in here because there's new short-term rental legislation that, um, is potentially allowing us the ability to do business licensing for short-term rentals. And so there may be, uh, a cost associated with doing that piece of work.
Makes sense.
Well, um, there was, I don't know how it's all working, shaking out, but there was funds supposedly supplied through the new legislation to help with some of these increased costs and, and then, is that, is that potentially going to be helpful in this area?
Yeah, I have not heard about funds specific to the short-term rental piece. I know we've gotten the LG cap funding and the housing funding for. I know we've gotten the LG cap funding and the housing funding for the schmuck. Oh, it's in there, okay.
I I would recommend that staff look into it because I I saw that funding also. So um, yeah, i- i- if it's been sitting there for a number of years, we're in the same situation as a couple of the other ones that we've looked at. So eh uh again, is this another one that could possibly come out of the uh I I don't know what the reserve is on this on this one year, but you know, maybe something that comes out of the reserve also.
Yeah, the reserve for land planning is a hundred ninety thousand and five hundred thirty-three. Yeah, and this is more of a contingent expense.
Yeah.
And uh, yeah, could look at maybe just reducing it versus removing it. But I'll have conversations with Kim and we'll discuss some options.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll bring back a fresh um budget for February.
More questions, Suzanne, Director Stoner and Director Reynolds?
Well, also just to clarify, as a carry forward project, we're not taxing for it this year. It is basically reserved money.
A surplus. It's it's it would be just flowing into surplus.
So removing it doesn't change your tax requisition. It doesn't reduce your.
It it does. Yeah, yeah. So right now it's in surplus carry forward into twenty twenty-four. And there's a matching expense, but if we took that expense away, we would just have that surplus additional funds.
It does. It it can. It does create space then.
Yes.
Potentially by removing.
Well, I was just going to comment that that when that was put in there, we had a lawyer on the board, an ex-lawyer on the board. And his 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 comment was that if we did take somebody to court and it was going to we we'd have some costs accruing fairly rapidly. And so that's why it was put in place. So the question would be if if we take that out, uh if we do move into court action with somebody, is that have we got some other way of uh covering the costs as as somewhere else we can take it from?
Yeah, there is the option like Sal mentioned to pull from the operational surplus reserve, which in land, which is within land planning and zoning. Currently it has a hundred ninety thousand five hundred thirty-three within it. We'd have to come to the board if we needed this for a resolution to use the operational surplus reserve, but we can do that. So it could be a combination of just reducing this expense from forty-five thousand, say, to thirty thousand and saving fifteen thousand dollars overall within the budget. And then if if we ever went over the thirty thousand dollars, we'd have to come to the board requesting additional funding from the reserve.
Director Pennington?
Yeah, a few things. One, just to follow up on Director Stoner's question, I mean, my understanding is we're not taxing an additional forty-five thousand every year. It's just if we decide to pull this, there's that one forty-five thousand dollar pocket we get this time, but it's it's not an additional forty-five thousand every year. Uh, so it wouldn't be you know, free up some room this year, but we wouldn't tax an additional forty-five thousand this year because of this. But I guess my you know, it seems that we haven't needed this for short-term rentals, but I am hearing and we've had discussions, I think, about bylaw enforcement and so on, especially in in area D to my my knowledge. And and so maybe that's not the bucket, but I I guess I do have some hesitation about not having a source to maybe do a little bit more on some of those things if we decide to. So I have some comfort in keeping something there. Maybe it's not that bucket, but.
Right?
Yeah, I mean, I've I'm I think I see some of where Sal's been going on this and 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 we don't tax new for, but it does create space within the budget and it's a one-time only, as you say. So if we did need it, then you know, even if we take it from operational, we probably didn't top up that reserve next year. So that cost can come out. But I have felt for some time that we do have very strong operational contingency funds in our budgets here. And while it's not new taxation, it is taxpayers' dollars that sit there year over year. And 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 a year like this, where we're looking at some pretty major increases. Um, I appreciate Director Mer's direction of trying to soften that not you know, I think it was Director Herford's comments, not to the detriment of next year or the year after. So we get hit hard there. I like a more gradual where we can. But I think as a general, when I looked at some of our contingency funds for, you know, every one of these cost centers, it adds up and there's a lot of taxpayers' money sitting there on a yearly basis. And that's that's a consideration of mine when when looking at the increases that we might be looking at this year.
Director Cronklin?
If if we are doing what you're talking about and 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 constraining our contributions to contingencies, then that can be a lowering of tax rate, but it's not one year. It's for good out the front window. And so that's not what I'm seeing happening here. This is pulling it out one year and I don't think that reduces the tax rate increase because we still need to in include it moving forward. So if you want to lower contingency amount, I think you can knock some points off the increase. But to me, that seems like something that we want to have a report comeback around lowering contingencies myself.
So so my my goal isn't to lower the contingencies. My goal is to not have a redundancy with carryovers that if we can get rid of some of those carryovers that are carried over year over year and it's taxpayer money sitting there, recognizing that we do have a contingency in place. So I don't want to reduce the contingency so much as rely on them a little more if we do need them. We rarely go into them for any of these things. Um, and we, you know, some of these carryovers are are year over year over year. So personally, my goal isn't to say at the end of this, let's look at our contingencies and shrink those. But having a a healthy contingency and these carryover funds that are there for that purpose to me is the redundant and and those funds can be better.
I I'm not supportive of one-year moves like this because I don't think it actually changes the amount that we require taxation in any substantive way. So if we're going to make a change like this, I I I it should be go forward, not just a single year, because I I don't think that that substantive changes the amount that we tax.
Director Stoner?
Uh, for this particular item, I'm supportive and sending it back to staff for some consideration of uh the changes in the regulations around short-term rental that are coming down the pipe and what we're going to need in order to or or create business licensing if that becomes an option. Um, and what that looks like relevant to the Ministry of Housing Capacity Funding. Um, if we use some of that, but I think um generally I'm supportive of the carry forward, but would appreciate staff to have that discussion and come back with a proposal.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, for sure. So we still have to have some discussions, myself, Kim and and the C O about using this um Ministry of Housing Capacity Funding. And we'll basically build a strategic way to cover off expenses that are applicable under that funding. Um, so that will be adjusted and sent with the February um iteration of this budget. Um, as we know for now, this the housing needs assessment update that could be covered underneath this grant. Um, so there's fifteen thousand dollars right there. But we'll look at all the opportunities. We still haven't had the opportunity to discuss it in in detail. Um, we just received this this grant information in January, so it's always a seems like a marathon every day trying to get all this new information into the budget. Okay, so yeah, I mentioned the operational reserve is a hundred ninety, which is meeting the reserve guidelines. Is there any other questions on the land planning and zoning budget?
Not seeing any.
Right. Did you want to continue on to the next one? I'm not sure when the lunch break will be for you guys, but I can go to regional solid waste.
Carry on Suzanne.
Okay.
You didn't see your eyes?
All right. So the regional solid waste management plan includes a transfer from the operational reserve of seventy thousand. This was actually budgeted in twenty twenty-three as well, but we did not pull any of it so far for twenty twenty-three as it wasn't needed. Um, basically, the seventy thousand will go towards the solid waste emergency management plan, which was carried forward a fifty thousand and the multi-family strategy and action plan, which was carried forward for twenty thousand. So we'll offset um these plans with that operational reserve. Uh, the zero waste educator continues into twenty twenty-four. Um, we also have the zero waste ambassador contract continuing into twenty twenty-four, first added in twenty twenty-two. They attend parks and events in the area um as an ambassador for zero waste. Uh, the area A diversion options for organics was moved to twenty twenty-five. So you'll see that in the February budgets with the five-year financial plan included. And uh we do have five thousand dollars for the legal dumping strategy continuing into twenty twenty-four. There's the diversion campaign that continues as well, and they requested eighteen thousand dollars this year for that. Um, we also have the WildSafe BC Coordinator continuing and that's twenty thousand six hundred added for that. And their operational surplus, I misspelled that, is sixty-three thousand after the seventy thousand has been taken away, which is uh just about two months, which just under two months. Sorry, just over two months, which meets their reserve guidelines. Is there any questions specific to the budget? Well, I forgot to mention there's one new pilot project starting in twenty twenty-four and that's for waste reduction initiatives. Um, so it's just five thousand dollars to start this program. And then this will be reduced to ten thousand, just FYI. So there's a five thousand dollar savings already here. Um, and it's for monitoring of the old Pemberton landfills. So previously, we were using reserve funds that were built up previously many years ago for these old Pemberton landfills because there was monitoring requirements. Um, the monitoring requirements will go away soon, but the reserve funds are now depleted. And so we've brought it here to this service as an expense. It'll be reduced to ten thousand, like I mentioned. And it's due to um environmental regulations. And Sally, you have a question? Oh, you're muted, Sal.
Sorry about that. The multi-family strategy and action plan carry forward. That's another one. I I don't know what that is.
Yeah, I don't know the operational details behind it. Um, I'm not sure if Omar or Mary Lou are available to be pulled into the conversation.
We do have Omar right here.
Yeah, I'll let Mary Lou's online too. I'll let her jump in.
We have a question about the meaning of multi-family strategy and action plan, which is going to be carried forward for a value of twenty thousand dollars.
Um, through the chair. Um, so staff didn't have the capacity to take on this last year, but we're hoping to be able to have a better idea of what kind of multi-family we have within the S R D uh boundaries to understand a little bit how we can can we improve diversion. If we need new bylaws in terms of like not only the storage they need, but also what kind of service they have to provide. Uh, at this point, the S R D doesn't have any specific bylaws to to dictate them the type of service. So I know that some multi-family opt out for the organic connection, but it's we are really lacking information and that multi-family um strategy will help S R D guide us, will help to guide us kind of like the next step to take for um the multi-families.
So uh the the question like what what do you consider a multi-family?
Um, so multi-families is uh up to like above three units. So could be condos, townhouses, uh those will be multi-family. It's basically anything that doesn't fall under um single house.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Mary Lou. Is there any other questions on the solid waste budget while we have Mary Lou here as well? Okay. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Um, so I'll go to the utilities environmental services department. Uh, this is a fully clearing cost center. The staff charge out their time to all the services they work on through our financial software and through time sheets. And we recover all the costs for this U E S department. So all the training, all of the travel and all of the items listed. Uh, we have advertising, communications, software, publications, and also the overhead from general government, which is basically having to have the server structure and the building structure and just the portion of all those costs of general government. That's all recovered through um time allocation revenue. Um, what we've added this year, there's been some adjustments with um some of the staff and it still includes the unfilled full-time position that's already been approved for the maintenance technician. And basically, there is some safety equipment included. We've just bumped that up slightly from the budget in twenty twenty-three. There is um nothing else to note. Everything is very standard status quo from previous years. Any questions on the utilities environmental services department budget? Great. And so the next budget in line is the regional transit planning and infrastructure budget. So this is a very hypothetical budget. Um, I tried to keep it broad enough to allow us to use the funds which were approved from the growing communities funds of seven hundred twenty-five thousand to start whatever plans and strategies are going to be done. So what I did was I used um the seven twenty-five for both a special project and also for fixed assets. And I'm assuming we'll start with special project work, including reviews, feasibility studies and and just what is possible for us to do. Um, and then I added some asset, fixed asset um increases as well, just in case we actually do get to start building or designing for actual infrastructure. Um, it's very hypothetical. Like I said, it's still very preliminary and maybe I'll have more information the next time this budget is is brought to the board. Um, any questions on this? I I also use fifty thousand dollars from the reserve fund. Um, that's always been budgeted. It hasn't been used yet. And that will cover off any staff time that's not applicable under the grant, say, just I assume most of the staff time will be applicable, but just in case um there's additional projects that are requested that don't fall under the growing communities fund. Like I said, I'm just trying to keep it very flexible for what potentially might happen with. Like I said, I'm just trying to keep it very flexible for what potentially might happen with this service. It's still very unknown. Any questions on this budget?
Yes, Director Ray.
Yes, I I I see it's um the heading is Regional Transit Planning and Infrastructure. Um, would that therefore include um any transit that might be in the um Liluette area, B area? Um, for example, we we just heard yesterday that the our bus services had to close down. Um, would we be able to look at using some money to support that kind of service?
Definitely. Definitely, yes.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, so they are participants of the service area A and B and District of Liluette, so they can be they can be involved with any kind of transit planning and infrastructure.
Because we we tended to just look at see the sky transit. There we go.
Yeah. Um, so, oh, sorry, just gonna double check that they are a full partner, but I'm pretty sure all of the areas are included in this. Yeah, so it does. All of these areas would be taxed eventually. Right now, there's no taxation. We're using surplus funds and the available Growing Communities Fund. But I'm assuming eventually there will be taxes for the service. It will be tricky to tax the whole board for specific parts of the transit as it develops, but we'll kind of deal with that as it comes. It's still so very unknown as to what exactly will take place.
Thank you.
And Sally, you have a question?
Yes, I do. Yes, I do. Do you bring up the, what is the uh total reserve on this one? So it looks like we it was seventy seventy one thousand and you're taking fifty thousand out.
That's exactly right. So it would leave twenty thousand left in the reserve.
Okay.
And I basically pulled this reserve to cover the staff time uh quotient in case it's not covered under um the Growing Communities Fund. But I'm assuming that we won't need this fifty thousand, so we won't need that full transfer from reserve either.
Okay, thank you. And and yes, you make a very good point on on uh down the road when things start happening and infrastructure goes in and so on and so forth. Who's going to get taxed for it?
Yeah, I assume we might have to create separate services at that point when it's actually um operating. So until that happens, we'll use this service.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Any other questions on the regional transit planning? Okay. And regional growth strategy. Um, not a lot happened in twenty twenty three, but for twenty twenty four, they want uh some R G S monitoring uh of twelve thousand dollars for potential contract assistance. And then there are budgeted meeting costs as well. Um, every year I budget four thousand dollars just for R G S meeting costs. And if we did have First Nation consultations, we can pull from the Squamish Nations Fund Reserve, which we received many years ago. Um, and specifically for consultation for regional growth.
Uh, question put right behind you.
Yeah, and I may have misunderstood our last topic, but I thought I heard about a R G S review in twenty twenty four in the last topic, so I would expect some of these numbers to be a fair bit higher. And and maybe there needs to be some board direction on level of engagement of First Nations, but you know, even capacity funding and so on possibly, so. I'm not sure if there
Oh, great.
if there's more needed here.
Yes.
Yes, so yes, we will be uh asking the board to consider a review and it it's likely not to be a full scale overhaul of the regional growth strategy. But as Ms. Dugger mentioned earlier today, there may be some more work done in and around the climate change piece and some other parts of the regional growth strategy. Um, there will be a need for some consultation, but it's not going to be um like overly extensive like it would be if we were doing a full on R G S overhaul. So I think the work is going to be done in-house. So we won't need any additional funds for that. I think the four thousand dollar meeting cost should accommodate um what we're going to be doing in terms of meetings and um any advertising, et cetera, that needs to get done.
Okay. And then just out of curiosity, is like staff time that's allocated to an R G S review, is that get applied to the R G S budget or the planning budget?
R G S, yeah.
And that's accounted for in this draft budget?
Uh, I believe so, yes. You have staff time.
Yeah, so the R G S staff time is is ten thousand dollars for twenty twenty four, and that's recovered into the planning department as a a revenue. Okay. Any other questions for the R G S budget?
No, but I see Ms. McDonald's here. Proceed as Sky Trail.
Oh, great. Okay, so I'll just start it off and I'm glad Alison is here for any specific operational questions. But we did increase this tax requisition to the new maximum. We did receive that approved by law for a service establishment amendment to increase the maximum requisition twenty five percent. And so it it can be reduced, but it's shown at the new maximum currently. Um, it includes many grant funded projects and many placeholders for applied grants that we don't know the results of yet. Um, and it also includes a transferring of twenty seven thousand four hundred and seven from the operating surplus reserve, uh leaving the balance at two hundred and twenty nine thousand right now. And there's options to draw more funds from this reserve um and then reduce the requisition revenue if that was something the board wanted to consider. Um, just gonna go to that actual budget right now. And so we have um some donor contributions. We also have some active transportation grants that are confirmed. And then there's many um potential grants included. So I did this plug for a million and sixty thousand for potential grants that we're hoping um will come through. And then for the expense side, um, there's just slight increases. Uh, sorry. Most of them are status quo. Um, we did we did increase the staff time for Friendship Trail and the Chekemis Canyon Highway Trail, which I think are the most um are the focus. And the fixed assets total about one point nine six four so far, but it includes this one million sixty that's been plugged. Um, so if we don't receive grants, we won't continue with this Chekemis Canyon um portion. Is there any questions for myself or for um Alison?
Not seeing any, Suzanne.
All right. Great. And I think that concludes the presentation.
Nice to be timed. Yes, Director Penny, yeah.
One uh more, and maybe it's a philosophical question for the board, but just thinking back to the fires in the summer and we had, you know, all of our staff working on the fire, not doing work. And it seems that that unfortunately going to be is something that happens more frequently rather than less. And so setting aside the cost piece of it, but just in terms of our capacity planning, are we starting to make assumptions about? Or or maybe we're at the plan is to reorganize how we handle things, but assumptions, but we're going to lose a a month of capacity to responding to emergencies. And and are we starting to think about that in our budgeting for a year?
Okay. Uh, it's a great question and something that I've been digging into over the last nine days. I think one of the things that I'm consistently hearing is when O E O C activates and not if, which is a is a telling narrative to me. Um, however, I'm not sure. I think again, requesting time to learn and and learn about this and I'm not sure if planning for this should be we're at that point, honestly. Um, but it's definitely something that's being considered and that question's being asked a lot. Are we in a Ferris wheel situation at this point? Is it? And the same question can go to uh E O C and recovery. Right now, where our recovery team is over is still going while they're about to go into possibly an activation. So there's a big wholesome thing to think about on how we kind of mitigate this Ferris wheel idea and actually be progressive in our projects while still reacting and preventing emergencies. That answers it, but what I'm saying, good question, asking the same thing.
Thank you. Uh, we made a motion to receive uh this report from Director Richmond. Thank you, seconded by Director Stoner. All in favor? Any opposed? Same and motion carried. Thank you very much, Mr. Franz.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alison. Um, we have lunch. We plan to finish the meeting. Oh. So so we're very close to the end of the committee of the whole. Well, we've lost Jim. I have nothing. Um, Jen, she didn't say there was a likely hour of the check where she is. In her central, maybe. Yeah, okay, scheduled, uh. On late business, we don't have any Director Ray goes with the German. Thank you, seconded by Director Herford. No one is opposed to that. Okay, lunch time.